I almost slipped the keys.
You're fine.
No, I thought you were going to do the other stuff first. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the finance committee of the whole meeting of the board of directors of the school district for the city of Allentown. For today, October 23rd, 2025. And then let's... yeah, there we go. And that's as far as I'll go before, because otherwise I go into the ropes. Okay. All right. We'll try again. I'd like to call to order the finance committee of the whole meeting of the board of school of directors of the school district of the city of Allentown for today, October 23rd, 2025. And then let's welcome some of these people.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, school board of directors, to all of our families who are here, members of my team, all our leaders and teachers, educators, staff, and all of our students. Most importantly, please give yourselves a round of applause. Tonight, as we've entered into our school board of directors room, if you notice on our screens this evening, we're highlighting the schools who had 94% attendance rates thus far this year, which is the state target. So let's give a roaring round of applause. Dodd Elementary School, Lehigh Parkway, Mullenberg, Ritter, Sheridan, Union Terrace, and South Mountain. So I don't know about all of you, but I'm very competitive, school board directors. So we want to see that list have all of our schools at the state target. So I want to commend all the families, all the students thus far. How many people are -- I know this is not the -- this is the board's meeting, but I just want to say, we're going to encourage every school to get on that honor, that distinction. We will showcase this every single month. So thank you so much. We also displayed the winners of our first You Are The Light for this year. We recognized last week about 55 members of our learning community. We had a huge celebration. There are more than 377 people in that assembly. So please, school board of directors, I thank you for some of you who are there. Please give them a round of applause with me, all the members of... The people, this You Are The Light ceremony is a time when we come together and we recognize members of our learning community, people who we call catalytic ambassadors or catalytic leaders. Some of them are trendsetters. Some people are really loud about their successes in helping people, and then some people do it very quietly. And they sow seeds in the lives of their learning community, as well as our broader school district. And we recognize them each month. So we encourage you, when you receive a letter saying or invitation to our You Are The Light ceremonies, they're a lot of fun. And we really want to recognize often the great things that are happening in Allentown. So thank you. And again, we will showcase those names. We also will, if you go to our top five each month, or I'm sorry, each week, we have a top five things that are happening in the Allentown School District. So if you have not subscribed, you can go to our website and subscribe to our top five. This week, if you have someone in your family member, loved one, teacher, administrator, or someone in your lives, you can see them in the top five. But before we begin our committee meetings tonight, I am so excited to continue on with the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. And tonight, we are going to give, I guess, our drum roll. Please join me in welcoming the William Allen High School Latin Drummers! As they assemble, I wanted to thank the following individual, following members of our learning community who are supporting this program, including the Puerto Rican cultural preservation, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you for being here, Mr. and Mrs. Velez, Ms. Renata Redman, Mr. Jess Munoz, Miss, I'm sorry, Jess Munoz, and all of our students, and of course, our William Allen leadership team. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. We had only four hours to start with this, and these are amazing students from Allen. Yes. Thank you. Let's start, guys. Bombay Mayola! Bombay Mayola! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Bombay Mayola, bombay mayola, bombay mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Bailame la bomba, bailame la ya! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Eso! Bailame la bomba, bailame la ya! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Tócame la bomba, tócame la ya! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Eso! Suéñalo, Mariles, suéñalo ya! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola! Eso! Otra! Bombay Mayola! Bombay Mayola! Bombay Mayola, Puerto Rico, bombay mayola!
Let's give it up for the Latin American Drummers!
Mayola is a barrio in the west coast of Puerto Rico. That's where it was.
Again, let's give another roaring round of applause. Tonight, we have lots of recognition, so I'm really excited tonight. This past week, we marked the end of Hispanic Heritage Month and our third annual arts and letters contests. I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Weiss, who is our Director of Rural Languages, and Ms. Diane Jansen, who is our Executive Director of English Learner Services. Mr. Weiss and Ms. Jansen.
Yes. Okay, excellent. So it's an honor to wrap up honoring Spanish Heritage Month like this. And we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the Allentown School District Foundation for their incredible work in helping us organize the art and writing contest, for coordinating the voting process, and securing fantastic surprises for our winners. This year's contest saw a remarkable increase in the participation. We had 175 entries, which is 120 more entries than last year. Yes. Selecting winners was a difficult task, as you could see from the artwork that was displayed out in the lobby. So we'd like to honor our winners now, most of whom or which are here tonight. So as your name is called, please come to the podium to collect your, select your prize. I was going to say surprise. And you can then come up to see what the board meters, board members. All right. Our first winner is Eva Fesjetski? Fatski? I'm so sorry, Eva. No? Okay. Alicia Karasacco? Karasacco? Karasko. I am really not doing well. We had word that they would be here. Jesslyn Bernal Gordo? Gordo? Finally! Okay. Ian Savdora Mozo? And we have one more winner from Sheridan, Avery Rivera. And actually, one more from Sheridan, I'm sorry, Angelina Rodriguez. All right. Then we have Ana Jalise Velez from Central. There's one other winner. Oh, wait, sorry. That's okay. And we also have Naeja Espinal from Stream Academy. All right. Then we move on to our winter winner, writing winners, which we have Miracle Polino from Sonia, New York. Oh, okay. Evie Osorio? Adrian Montero? Deiana Rodriguez Almeida? Deiana Rodriguez Almeida? Ariane Santiago? And Callan Velasquez? I guess you could switch it. Is that right? Is that the right? Okay, and then for middle school art winners, we had a huge representation from South Mountain. We have Michaela Ortiz. Victoria Sanchez Vasquez. Jeremy Lopez. Also from South Mountain. And Nicole Arias. Oh. Wait, 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 here we go, here we go. And then, for middle school writing, we have Amira Artjuke. Maria Payamps Ortega. Raylin Helfrich. Ashley Marte. Gabrielle Liz Palais. And Honest Rodriguez. Again, we want to thank our heartfelt thanks to the Allentown Foundation for every, and everyone who made this possible. So, thank you.
Let's give our student winners for Hispanic Heritage Month a round of applause, another round of applause. Now, we'd like to recognize our student board representatives. We'll call them in the regular board meeting, so we'll go into the committee meetings, school board directors. So, we're gonna acknowledge the student board representatives in the regular school board meeting. Are the school leaders, is Mr., are the school leaders here? Cause if they're here. Thank you. Can I continue? It's okay. If that's okay, Madam Chair, I'm gonna continue with my remarks.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. As October comes to a close, I'd like to recognize all of our school leaders as part of National Principals Month. Let's give a roaring round of applause for all our principals. I want to say I thank you for all your hard work, your commitment. I'm so honored and grateful to serve with such exceptional leaders. I appreciate you, and on behalf of all of the Allentown School District, we just want to say thank you for your hard work and commitment. We did recognize them a little earlier this month in our Executive Leadership Learning Academy. Other celebrations this month are School Custodians Appreciation Day, Unity Day, Bullying Prevention Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and National School Lunch Week. And so, we've had many celebrations throughout the district. I was fortunate to be able to serve with our cafeteria workers over at Roosevelt School, so thank you for allowing me to serve with you and understand truly what you do every day. And again, I appreciate all of you for your hard work. To everyone who was recognized on these, all these special days, thank you again for your dedication and service to our students and for lighting the way each day here in the Allentown School District. There are few, I'm gonna, Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'm just gonna give the majority of my comments in this section of the meeting, cause I know we have a long way to go. As we near the fifth month mark of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's ongoing budget impasse, I want to just provide an update on how this unprecedented times in our state, we are the only state in the United States that has a budget impasse right now. The only state. And it's affecting the Allentown School District, and of course, and other districts across the Commonwealth. But, and I just want to outline some of the steps we are taking as an overall learning community to be prudent in our spending, and so that we, there's continuity of our educational programming being implemented throughout the district. And just explain to our, the board, as well as our learning community, the impact the budget impasse is having. The failure to adopt the state budget is now significantly impacting our ability to operate as efficiently as we would like to. Our district serves approximately 16,000 students and their families, and this lack of funding is increasingly limiting the resources and services that we are going to provide, we have to provide for our students. The currently proposed state budget includes increased investments in public education, namely, in the Ready to Learn Block Grant, basic education funding, special education funding, and savings through much-needed cyber charter school funding reform. For the Allentown School District alone, this proposal, if we, if budget impasse was, budget was passed, will provide more than $24.4 million additional dollars to our, in funding, to our district. While the district entered the fiscal year in a stable financial position, the prolonged nature and scale of the current impasse was unforeseen. The prolonged delay has begun to place serious strain on us as an organization. As a district that receives more than $333 million annually from the state, which means approximately 67% of our total operating budget, this disruption in funding is now forcing us to make some difficult decisions. Our Office of Financial Services continues to closely monitor our financial position and explore all available strategies to maintain our operations. As a district, we are implementing the following operational adjustments, and basically, we're reducing some of our nonessential expenditures and limiting our overtime. And we are reducing the amount of charter school payments. Our team continues to monitor all financial activity daily, and we remain focused on protecting classroom resources, instructional supports, and the well-being of our students. We are confident that careful stewardship and continued advocacy at the state level will emerge, we will emerge from this moment even stronger. We encourage members of our learning community to contact our local legislators, and I have to commend our legislators, cause they are being very supportive, but I encourage you and urge you to contact them and help us to ensure that the Allentown School District receives an equitable budget. Our students deserve a government that supports their children, and our voices can make a huge difference. As we look ahead, so I just want to make sure I gave the board an update on where we are as it relates to our budget. And as we look ahead to next week, on Wednesday, October 29th, after I talk about all the money, we are excited to convene more than 350 of our parents, families, school leaders, various educators, staff, and members of our collective community to our School Governance Council meeting. So, that meeting will be held as the launch of our School Governance Council. That particular was a policy that our board passed last academic year, and will really support our, what we, that's undergirded in our strategic plan, our commitment to family and community engagement, to support all of our efforts. And that will be held at the PPL Center. This district-wide event, again, helps, each School Governance Council will serve as a basic advisory board to schools and help influence some of decision-making around curricula, decisions, the budget at each school, we're hoping one gets passed soon, as well as some of the key, say if a school needed a new principal, we will list the support of the School Governance Council to help us with questions, develop the profile of the principal. Tonight, before our building meeting, additionally, we are aware that our facilities have been the subject of recent community concern. We appreciate everyone's feedback, and I wanted to assure the public and the board, of course, as well as our families and the students, that we are being proactive and transparent and student-centered in our response. We will continue to monitor environmental conditions and conduct quarterly air quality testing as we remain committed to providing safe and healthy and well-maintained learning environments across the schools. That said, the district continues to face a significant backlog in millions of dollars in deferred maintenance needs, the result of decades of underfunding. So, we, we are concerned about ensuring that we have, our facilities are maintained, but just so that you're aware, some of these facilities' concerns have been for 20 or more years, and we are addressing them now using the resources that we have, but we still need the budget to be passed. Despite these challenges, we've made some progress, and tonight, you will hear a high-level overview of the district's proposed capital improvements for athletics. We are also excited that we will share a design of our family engagement resource center. Thank you, Ms. Matheson.
Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held. The purpose of the executive session, excuse, I'm sorry about that. The purpose of the executive session was to engage in informational updates presented to the board on a number of district initiatives, as well as consultation with council and human resources regarding pending grievances with multiple bargaining units, discussion regarding proposed expulsion adjudications, discussions with council regarding NIS payment responsibilities, legal issues surrounding charter school payments during budgetary impasse. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards, and according to our board's policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented in resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Board Secretary, Mr. Simonson. The comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the board. Do we have any cards for agenda items?
No agenda items.
Okay. And Madam Superintendent, you have nothing else to add?
No, thank you, Ms. Matheson. No, thank you.
So, Mr. Walk, you'll be presenting the budget calendar for us for the fiscal year '26-'27, and this is a discussion item for us tonight.
Good evening, school board, uh, school board directors. The budget calendar for this year. The budget calendar for this year starts in, I apologize.
It's a joy.
Just want to remind the board, as well as to our entire community, our decisions as it relates to budget are grounded in our foundation, which is our mission, our vision, our core values, as well as closely aligned with all the deliverables that are included within our strategic plan. And as you can see, there's our mission, vision, and core values. Tonight, we're going to present an overview of the budget timeline for the next academic year, and some of, we are going to continue to plan this year in anticipation, cause we know that we will eventually receive some resources. So, Mr. Walk.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. So, our budget calendar for this year, kicking off with the Act One Index, which was recently released, the base index being 3.5%, with Allentown's index being 5.4%. And that would be the maximum amount that you could potentially raise taxes to without a referendum exception. Of course, that's not what we're looking to consider. That was recently released for October. We're going through and reviewing some budgets. Obviously, we're having discussion this evening on potential tax rates and the resolution for opting out of that potential tax increase. In November, we would have further discussion and then look to begin discussion with school leaders and department heads through our school quality review process. For December, we will get notice of the homestead, or we will have the mailers sent out to potential recipients of homestead dollars, which is the property tax. recipients of homestead dollars, which is the property tax reduction program for seniors, and further meetings with department heads and school leaders. In January, we will continue that work, as well as in February, as we move towards a final budget. In March, we will have, property owners will be notified or chosen essentially for the homestead dollars. Anybody that qualifies under threshold would be eligible for those dollars. And then in April, we, we would be certified for what the amount of those dollars are so that at that point in time, we would have a pool of money in which to determine the rate that those, those property owners for homestead would be able to receive that, those discounted dollars on their property tax bills that would be issued later in the year. And then in May and June, we would be passing the preliminary final budget and then adopting the final budget at the June meeting.
Thank you. Also, we, Mr. Walk is requesting approval from the Board of Directors for the budget in '26, '27, the Act One opt-out provision. Will you explain that to us, please?
Yes, this is the, so the rate, the 5.4% rate is the maximum increase that the school district-
Would you say that again, please?
The 5.4% increase, the, the index rate that the state has given us based on a number of factors, is the maximum amount that the school district could apply or could raise taxes for, for next year. So this, the resolution that I'm asking you to consider this evening is to not go above that rate. This is the action that you would take if you're not planning to do a large tax increase.
So, is there any question or discussion about his recommendation to us not to go above the Act One, uh, required item for our, for, excuse me for stumbling, the Act One required number for us? That would be 5.4. Are we willing to opt out?
I would-
Go.
So the question for me is, do we have to raise taxes?
No. No, 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 no.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have to raise taxes if we agree to the five point, if we opt out, we agree to the five?
Right, we're agreeing not to go above that.
Okay, suppose we don't want to do anything?
That, we still have that option. That's, we're not going, we're not going above.
You're trying to be safe.
So-
Correct, exactly.
If I may, so the action that I'm asking you to consider tonight is what you would do if you were planning to not raise taxes or if it was a smaller increase. This is the action that, that you would take.
Yes, right, yeah.
If you don't, if you don't pass this, what it means is that you'll have a different budgetary process that would enable you to get exceptions and the like. This is actually to simplify the process, especially since the administration is not planning to recommend to go anywhere close to the 5.4% amount. This is, you know, this gets you to the end of the process much easier than the alternative.
We've been doing this. We've been doing this.
This is a good thing.
Yeah, I got, I got it, but I just wanted you to be able to explain it.
Sure.
Because what happened is, we talked earlier, when she, when Dr. Burks talked about where we are as a district, you know, we're all affected by that. We're all affected by everything that's going on in our nation. So what happened is, we talked about our citizens, which we're definitely going to put into fight, like, you know what, for our citizens. But then you got the little people like me and you, that we have to make sure that we safeguard ourselves. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody in this room has an understanding of what that means, because there's going to come another time when we're going to have another decision that's based on a decision that we made tonight. So I wanted to make sure that we had that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's not on that, but I know on the previous spreadsheet, there was, uh, there was an indication about the principals being a part of the budget discussion. How do we determine how much resources get, a specific school gets? And what is the process for a principal to advocate for their school for them to get resources to update their facility or to innovate? What's that process?
So we have a school quality review process for schools and departments. Each school presents to my cabinet, my extended cabinet specifically, so beyond the chiefs, and we look at their data. They talk about needs for the school. And so, and we look at their, in terms of, say, I'll give you an example, discipline data, for example. And so, and we have one school, and I'm sure, like, for example, a school like Rob School. They've done great work of diminishing, of decreasing their discipline rates, but we realized that school needed additional supports. And so they've done a, when they went before us with their school quality review a few years ago, and now they've reduced their discipline rates by 32%. So we look, we realized that, and I'll give you another example. We looked at our schools and realized that students needed some additional social, emotional learning supports. So we gave every school a social worker, in addition to the school counselors that they had. Some of them had part-time counselors. So we tried to make our decision-making based on the data, the performance in the school. We also asked schools to talk with their school teams, and so that's where happy, and I want to thank the board again, for passing the school governance policy, a council policy, because now, school leaders, their families, as well as teachers and community leaders who support their schools, they will understand, we're fully, the resources that are, that we have allocated to their schools. Some schools get various funding streams based on their state designations. So there are a lot of factors that go into play.
So it's not a case where, like, the squeaky wheel gets more oil type of?
So we are trying to, we've made attempts to not have that happen. Previously, and I, I think I shared this with the board previously, that one school would have 50 extra something, like a staff. And the data did not suggest that they needed those 50 additional staff members. So we sit in a room, we literally go, okay, this school has this many. We have schools that may have an additional administrator. And someone will say, well, why does that school have this many students and they have this many administrators? But based on the need, some, we realized that that school needed additional supports. So it's done based on data, quantitative data, as well as qualitative data, talking with school leaders. Now, do we have money to have, meet every single need? No, we know we don't. But we try, we look at it from a more objective approach to ensure that we're providing access to our schools.
Thank you.
As much as we can.
Thank you. Yeah, my question is really because I really want the school leaders to really advocate for their schools.
They do.
Like, you know, I, I, there, there are times, of course, when we visit schools and, you know, we talk to the school leaders, and they say, you know, we need this and we need that. And I know they're, they probably are advocating, and maybe you won't get it on year one, but maybe year two, you know, you'll be able to get it.
I, I agree with you, Ms. Noel, that we can do a better job of heightening the principal's advocacy for resources. Because sometimes, I have to say, our, our school leaders do a lot, and they work really hard. And so, and that we want them to say, hey, I need a bit, and they, and many of them do, more consistently than others. So we have to do a better job of, of opening opportunities so that they feel as though they can do a lot more advocacy. But remember, we only have a certain pool of money.
Yes.
And, and we don't have any, a 330, right now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. As well as coming up with more of a science of, more formal leg of decision-making.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for that.
I just want to add, so my, the, the question that popped in my head is, do the advocates, we have the school leaders, but do the advocates have an understanding of how that money or those resources are allocated to individuals, live schools? Because you may have advocates in a space and place leaning and dependent on the leadership to advise them when they're not eligible for certain things because there's another rule for their school. So have we considered educating the advocates so that they can show up in the right places and spaces to make sure that there is equity when it comes down to getting, giving those resources? Instead of saying, well, it's not that we're just, the squeaky, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. It's because it's, we want to be proactive. We don't want to, I don't want you to tell me that I don't got it because of this. I want you to tell me how to get it. So are we looking at that from that lens to be able to educate the advocates?
So we believe in continuous improvement. And so what I say to you, it's perfect science right now, and we've advocate, but we've empowered the various groups. I have a family advisory council. I have a student advisory council. The same presentation that you receive, they receive. They get an understanding of our goals for the year, and can we heighten it more? And that's why I'm really excited about the School Governance Councils, because now a lot more people will understand how school funding works, how many resources we see, funds that are restricted dollars. Sometimes people may not understand, well, why does that school get extra? Well, they were designated by the state. Or there's various factors that we have to use our resources for. So I agree, it's not a perfect science by, by no means, so I don't want to present that. However, we believe in continuous improvement, and any feedback the board or any members of our, of our collective community has to help us with that, we welcome it.
Well, you get help, because I'm leaving December. So I'll be on the other side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? May I have a motion to move the Act One number of 5.4 to this evening's later meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It moved, the item moves forward to later this evening. At this time, we're taking public comment cards, our non-agenda items. Do we have any?
We do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say, I had the opportunity to sit through your presentations earlier, and it was very uplifting. And as a resident of the city, I was delighted to be part of that and to see the wonderful things that are happening. So I, I want to acknowledge that. But I'd like to talk to you tonight about something that I'm not feeling very uplifted about, and that's the school bus safety program. About four months ago, my wife received a citation in the mail for passing a school bus. Now, you don't know my wife, but my wife is the typical little lady who drives to church every day and drives home and stops at the farmer's market. She has never had a traffic citation in her life, never. 50 years of driving. So she was shocked when she received that. But I don't know if you've seen the citation. It basically says, "We got you. We have you on videotape. The police have looked at it. You're guilty. Pay it." $300. So, I don't know, some of you may be very wealthy, and $300 may be nothing to you. And I'm fortunate enough that we can live and pay $300. But I know that you know that not everybody in Allentown is in that position. I'm on a committee at our church that helps people that have temporary financial problems, and I can tell you, many of those would find their finances in chaos if they had an extra $300 bill to pay this month. So she paid it, and we went on. A month later, we received a second citation in the mail. This one was for me. You can imagine how shocked I was. I think I'm a pretty safe driver. I would never go around and park a school bus, never. So I looked at the, at the citation more carefully, and I found out there was a video I could look at. So I went to look at the video. And what did the video show? You people know the city pretty well, probably. I'm driving south on 15th Street. I'm coming to Turner Street at the intersection. I'm looking ahead of me. I'm looking at the people coming from Turner Street that may pull in front of me. I'm looking at the lane of traffic coming the other way. And there's not a school bus in sight. But where is the school bus? It is parked on the curb on the other side of the street. Now, I don't know if, when you're driving, if you have a look at what's parked on the curb on the other side of the street, but I don't. I'm trying to watch in front of me. I might look at the lane to my right, someone might pull out. I might look at traffic coming at me. But am I looking at the, at a, at a school bus parked on the curb on the other side of the street? No. But all of a sudden, a stop sign comes out. It's flashing red. Okay, now I see it. But I'm just about at the school bus. Do you know how long it takes to stop if somebody throws a stop sign at you? And you're going 25 miles an hour, which is the speed limit? Do you have an idea how long it takes to stop? 90 feet. Two, two school bus lights. There is no way I could stop. Even if I saw the sign, which I don't remember saying, to be honest, but even if I did, there was no way to stop. So I saw in the paper that you can, I mean, I'm listening to this, that you can appeal. So I did appeal, and I was offered an appeal. But do you know how long you have to wait for that appeal? You have an idea? The backlog is over a year for appeals. So I thought, something's not right here. Something, something strange is going on. I backed around to the county and the finance, so I thought, what was the money? So I sent a right-hand request to the school manager. Can I ask you a question? One, how much money did you take in last year for this program? How much did you take in?
If I, if I may, just in terms, first of all, you're over time.
I was just about to say, yes.
And Mr. Whartonby will talk to you separately, but we do not administer, as a school district, the citation process at all for this. This is all the city of Allentown, which we have no connection with and the like. So we have no input in that process at all.
You don't have a contract with, with any company to administer this process?
We do not. It's all through the city. It's a city ordinance, which we have absolutely no control over. So we respect your issues, but we would say that you would have to raise-
In service to the city, we do not have any input or control over this process. So Lehigh Valley News has been asking for this information for months. You've been overturned twice by the state.
Can we have Dr. Whartonby take this offline?
In terms of the information that they've requested?
Yeah, Mr. Whartonby can talk about, but we have, we have no control. You're, you're really approaching this on the wrong direction completely. This is really a City of Allentown issue.
And the school just receives no money from us?
Not from the citations, I don't believe. Mr. Whartonby will address that issue with.
By the way, when I submit this request-
Sir.
I just have one more minute.
No, we, we, we've really allowed you some overtime now. We do have a time limit.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Do we have any other comment?
No, that's, okay.
Is there any old business to come before?
No, 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 hold on. Dr. Burks has to do something.
You want her to close out, and we'll have the kids come up so they can go? Okay, so we are, we'd like to acknowledge our student board reps. I think the school leaders are here now to introduce them, our student representatives for the board for the year. So if the school leaders could come and, the board, if you can just please come down and shake hands one more time.
She's in the middle of the-
Yeah, I asked, she told me to go. Yes. So do you want to close out the committee?
Yeah, let me close this out, because that's just another minute. Is there any old business to come before this board? Any new business? Then may I have a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we are adjourned.
Okay, now we go down?
I'm gonna stay right here. I'm gonna stay right here. Getting to my back before I was, yeah, yeah, please, thank you. You're allowed.
I only do this once.
Good evening, and I'd like to introduce to you our three representatives of William Allen High School. So our regular school board of director representative is Brianna Porter. Among our seniors, Brianna stands apart from the rest. Not only is her GPA remarkable, but she also has an outstanding track record of service to our school and community as a whole. Some of her accomplishments include completing internships at the Da Vinci Science Center and St. Luke's Hospital. Currently, she is a successful intern at LVHN. She is also a member of Canaries for Life, a longstanding service club at William Allen. She serves as class officer and is a member of our healthcare careers club, as well as Mu Alpha Theta. Brianna also serves as the president of National Junior Honor Society. Addition- Additionally, she is a small business owner and entrepreneur, paving her own way as a role model and leader in our community's small business sector. If you provide her with an opportunity, she will take it. And not only will she take it, but she will also give a hundred percent of herself to achieve and learn from it. During her interview for this position, she stressed that she truly wants to put a stop to the stereotypes that people have of William Allen, and is driven to make sure that people know that our students are more than just their zip code. David Thor is our education finance committee of the whole representative. David is an amazing young man. I always appreciate it when a student of his caliber and intellect also have a great sense of humor. He's really fun to be around, as his peers and staff can attest to. While his GPA speaks for itself, it's worth noting that he is heavily involved in our school sports and activities. He's a starter on our football team, participates in varsity track and field, is a violinist in our orchestra, a member of National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, our math honor society, the president of Media Memories Club, president of Allen A Student-Athlete Leadership, student council treasurer, and additionally, he has worked and helped at his family's restaurant since he was in middle school. He clearly has an incredible work ethic, coupled with the ability to juggle his various responsibilities. During his interview, David stressed the importance of listening and seeking to understand common issues, finding solutions, and being a voice for those who don't have the courage to voice their opinions. Looking for our last representative, Annie is our foundation representative. Annie is dedicated to her education, school, and community. She has easily earned the respect of her peers and the faculty at William Allen High School. Academically, she is a hard-working student who has maintained a strong work ethic. She has chosen to take increasingly challenging courses throughout her time at William Allen, including events placement courses. However, there's much more to Annie than her academic accolades. She is also involved with a variety of school organizations and sports. She has been an active member of the National Honor Society, our scholastic scrimmage team, and student government since her junior year, again, taking on increasing leadership roles. Annie has also been her class's historian since her freshman year. In addition to her scholarly pursuits, Annie has been a member of the varsity track and field team since freshman year. She is a genuine individual with a great deal to offer. During her interview, Annie stressed the importance of gathering others' opinions and ensuring their voices are heard through open and consistent communication. I'm confident that our three representatives will represent William Allen High School well.
community. Very pleased to be here to represent Lewis E. Dear of High School and represent, or sorry, to present our school board representatives. I also apologize for being a little late. We have a couple hundred students decorating our halls for Spirit Week. For those who do not know, there is a pretty big football game between Dear of High School and another Allentown High School this, this Saturday. So, without further ado, we do have six members. I think most of them are here, some of them are not, but I'm gonna recognize all of them because they are all deserving of our recognition. And for the ASD Education Finance Committee of the whole, our alternate is Mr. George Ramirez. George is a student leader participating in Air Force JROTC. He is a lead cadet in the JROTC. He is also a member of the National Honor Society, participates as an altar server at Sacred Heart Catholic Church in Allentown. Outside of school, George likes to connect with nature. He goes on walks around his neighborhood or hikes at Trexler Nature Preserve. He is also a phenomenal violin player and plays other instruments as well as singing classical pieces. As part of his AFJROTC training, George also practices exhibition drill, which consists of rifle spinning. His future plans are to go to college, where he will major in political science for a career as a lawyer, Mr. Saltanic, or prosecutor while serving in the Army National Guard or Air Force Reserve. Congratulations, George. And our primary rep, who was also decorating hallways earlier today and somehow made it to all these things on time, Chris is, Christopher Dornicki. Chris is a senior leader who is involved in the class of 2026. He is the vice president of our senior class, swim team captain. He is also on the debate team as vice president, student government as a class representative, and scholastic scrimmage team member. He is especially passionate about swim team in class of 2026, because he, as he says, that's where he has found the most community at LEDHS, although I would say he's pretty humble, and he does quite a bit to build that community, both on those clubs and throughout the entire school. He intends to major in mechanical engineering, possibly in MIT or Stanford as target schools, where he will focus on environmentally friendly propulsion systems for rockets and airplanes. He does hope to contribute to creating cleaner, more efficient technologies that advance aviation. And that's Chris for you, in a nutshell. For the ASD Foundation, Ms. Alexa Fondor is our alternate. Alexa enjoys volunteering and participating in various clubs, such as the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Science Honor Society, Multicultural Leadership Club. Has enjoyed being on the Dear of Soccer team. She volunteers at St. Luke's Bethlehem Hospital for, during the summer, because she just has that much extra time. She also, during the spring, plans to volunteer participating as a teacher for the Girls on the Run program at our future Huskies Ritter Elementary School, and her dream future plan after college is to become a dentist. So, Alexa Fondor. And our primary rep, I don't think she made it tonight, is our human Husky. She is still only a sophomore, but a significant student leader and the literal mascot of the school. Angelina Abu-Low is active in the class of 2028, debate theater, Twenty-First Century, plays basketball during her free time, as well as drums and the guitar. She is also an incredible artist who loves to draw and sew, and in two years, she will go to college, she's just starting to look now, to become a bio, biopsychologist or bioengineer. All right, and to our board representatives, our alternate, these two also make up the best guard tandem in the entire PIAA in our basketball team. Our alternate is Nailyn Gomez. She is a multi-sport athlete, starts in each of her season's sports, including soccer, softball, and basketball. She is also a leader of the class of 2026. Nailyn is involved as a mentor in the PAL, and holds numerous volunteer positions in the community, where she represents not only Dear of and ASD, but her entire family, a credible family, and in the entire Allentown community as model student and young person in general. One of the kindest kids you will ever meet. She maintains honor roll status while being one of the faces of our athletics program and playing leadership roles across the school. She will continue her education in college, eventually becoming a labor and delivery nurse. And our primary board rep, who will be sitting up here for the regular board meeting, is Anaya Holder. Anaya, it is incredibly difficult to summarize Anaya in a single paragraph, but she is the epitome of Husky pride. A multi-sport athlete, excels as captain of, don't say this too loudly, folks, the best sports team at Dear of, our amazing girls' basketball team. She is also on track, one of the most special and celebrated athletes Dear of has ever seen on the track. Last year, she earned a silver medal for the entire state as a junior in the 400 meter, where of course she will be winning gold this year. Her athletic prowess has earned her the attention of coaches at University of South Carolina, Wisconsin University West Point, and of course, we are Penn State. She is a well-rounded student athlete, and that stature is going to guarantee her the college of her choosing, because beyond simply her incredible athletic skills, she is a National Honor Society leader. This week, spearheaded a fundraiser that raised two thousand dollars for NHS charities at Dear of. She participates in literally too many other clubs to name, models what it means to be a Husky, and her resilience, compassion, and leadership, an eminently respectful and kind young person. Plans to continue her track career at one of those aforementioned prestigious universities, where she will also pursue a medical career. Academic should not be a problem for Anaya, who holds a 4.2 GPA while balancing all those other responsibilities. Anaya Holder.
All right, well, good evening, Dr. Burks, and school board members, and everyone in the Allentown learning and civic community. My name is Shannon Salter, and I'm proud to represent Bridgeview Academy here tonight. Our school leader, Jose Rosado, sends his best. And I'm so proud to introduce to you four remarkable young adults who are just about ready to take their place as emerging civic leaders in our community. So, I'm gonna start off, well, there are four young folks I'm gonna introduce to you tonight. The first one, I'm gonna start with a young woman who's gonna be our utility position player this year. She is going to be serving as our alternate for all three representative positions, so that she can learn each one of them. This young woman is currently a junior at Bridgeview Academy, and if you were to meet her, the first thing you would know is that this is a servant leader in the making. This is a young woman who is always the first to jump up and say, "How can I help? How can I serve? What can I do for you?" Every time, every time you need something done in class, she's standing there with open arms, open hands, ready to do the work. While she's doing that, she is already excelling, not in, not just in our regular curriculum, but in our dual enrollment classes in the building. She has been serving as a member of our in-house student advisory council, as well as the superintendent's advisory of the council in the past. She'll continue to do this this year, and I'm so excited to see what she will do to bring that servant's heart to the rest of the community, Ms. Ashanti Romero. Next, representing Bridgeview Academy at the ASD Foundation this year, this senior is somebody who was born to raise his voice, not just for himself, but he lends his powerful passion for speaking up to others as well. He has also served our building in the past, for the past four years, on our in-house advisory council and student government, planning school events, making sure that school spirit is well-served in the building. And I'm just so excited to see what this advocate does now that he raises his voice to a wider audience. You're gonna love working with him. He is currently not only excelling in his studies at our school, but he is one of the LVHN Healthcare Futures Fellows this semester internship program, Mr. Jaden Santos. Representing Bridgeview Academy in front of the ASD Committee of the whole is a sophomore who, in her only year and a couple months at Bridgeview, has proven her value to our community in so many ways. Not surprising, because the school at 265 Lehigh Street is in her and her family's blood. She is one of many siblings who've come through our school, and that school now has its name in part because of her service on the school renaming committee last year, which is where she was introduced to service in the broader community. She will be here with you every night for the committee meetings at the beginning of school board night. So excited for you to meet her and to see what she does for us, Ms. Emelani Lorenzo. And finally, taking over for Bridgeview Academy in the big chair, presenting our report to the regular school board meeting each month, this senior is a young woman who is both pathfinder and pathmaker. And what I mean when I say that is, she is never shy about seeking opportunities and finding ways to grow and develop, including the current internship at the Da Vinci Science Center that she's serving in our building. But she doesn't just find paths for herself, she makes them for others. I have never seen her leap for an opportunity without immediately reaching back and bringing others along with her for the ride. She builds opportunities for others. She makes other learners more successful around her while she is making success for herself. I know you are going to enjoy the Thursday nights you spend with her this year, Ms. Ismary Bunios Gutierrez.
the school board?
All right, I'd like to call to order the policy committee of the whole meeting. For the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Allentown, the board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public comment cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the board secretary, Mr. Simonsen. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Any remarks from our superintendent?
No, thank you, Mr. Nikloff. Just, good evening, everyone, again, and we're excited to present five of our new policies to the board for its consideration, as we continue to work to implement more efficient procedures and policies to run our district more efficiently and effectively. So, thank you, Mr. Nikloff.
Do we have any agenda item comments?
Not the policy.
Okay. All right, we have five policies tonight to present. First off will be Dr. Savoy. She has three of these policies, policy 216.1, policy 219, and policy 234. If it's all right with our, my colleagues, we'll have her do all three in one go.
Good evening, board and superintendent. I have, the first policy is policy 216.1. This is a new policy, is the first read. It's supplemental discipline records. This policy outlines the district's responsibility for maintaining student disciplinary records for offenses specified in the school code and other applicable state laws and regulations. This includes maintenance of records and information received from the court or for students who have been adjudicated. The next one is policy 219. This is also a new policy, first read. This policy is for student complaint process. This policy acknowledges the student's right to submit a complaint regarding actions that directly impact their participation in an approved educational program. The last policy is policy 234, which is pregnant, parenting, married students. In this policy, it gives the district the authority. I'm sorry. This should not be, okay. This policy has a lot of different changes. The first change was remove the language for compulsory school attendance in the purpose statement. Also, the authority, we disregarded the first paragraph of the authority. And it's made, it's been made consistent with PSBA most recent revisions. And we have to, the district has to select with reasonable modifications to include in the policy, recognizing that this is not, it will not be an exhaustive, exhaustive list. If you look at the policy, there are a number of items that need checklist. I believe we checked all of them for what we would provide to pregnant, parenting, and married students.
Any questions on these three policies? Comments? I have a motion to move these forward to a regular board meeting. I hear a maker and a seconder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Savoy. Next, we have two policies from Dr. Whartonby. They will be policy 218.1 and 218.2.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Burks. So the two policies before you tonight, one is existing and the next one is new. So the existing one is the weapons policy. In short, they added one paragraph. Basically, if a student brings in a weapon to school, they go through a threat assessment period with the school to determine if they brought it in intentionally, had ill intent with the weapon, so forth and otherwise. And the other part of this policy that is new, they use the word law enforcement as opposed to municipal law enforcement or police agency. So now it's just law enforcement agency. The second one that is before you is brand new. It's called terroristic threats. And this one is a little lengthier. It's two pages, all red, meaning it's brand new. Let's go into the next one. It's brand new. So I'll read. "The Allentown School District remains steadfast in its commitment to providing a safe and secure environment for all students, staff, and community members. Policy 218.2 prohibits any student from making or communicating terroristic threats towards individuals, school property, district facilities. This policy ensures that threats are addressed promptly through established threat assessment and law enforcement protocols in full compliance with state and federal law. The implementation of this policy is both timely and necessary. Since September 1st, 2025, schools across this country and here in Allentown have faced multiple bomb threats, including hoaxes, including five separate instances here in this school district, two at Trexler, three at William Allen High School. While each was ultimately determined a false alarm, each caused significant threat, excuse me, significant disruption, anxiety, and the deployment of clerical resources by law enforcement and district staff. The Allentown School District is deeply appreciative of the City of Allentown's Police Department, Fire Department, and the Lehigh County Sheriff's Office for their swift professionalism and ongoing support during these disruptive and unfortunate events. Partnership has been essential in maintaining safety, restoring calm, and ensuring our schools remain secure environments for all. In addition, this new policy, the district will also be following the Student Code of Conduct Handbook, which clearly outlines disciplinary responses at levels of infractions, including terroristic threats and bomb hoaxes, as a level four expellable offense. This ensures consistent enforcement, fairness, and accountability across all districts." This was brought forward because we are looking at the 200 series policies, but again, the timing was impeccable. The last four weeks, we had five bomb threats. So this is very important to have at, in our arsenal to protect every single student. Dr. Burks reminded me when I was concerned about the two students or the multiple students that did this act, you know, that, you know, this isn't necessarily about them, but the other 16,000 students that had to be impacted, or in the case of the high school, 3,000 students who had to go down to the stadium. It was, three times, it was a lot of work, and it was a lot of work to get the kids back in school. And the resources expended was incredible. So this is a very timely policy. Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, it is a timely policy, so thank you guys for bringing this up. In the area where it says authority, second paragraph, it says, "In the case of a student with a disability, including a student for whom an evaluation is pending, the district shall take all steps required to comply with state and federal law and regulations, the procedures set forth in the memorandum of understanding with local law enforcement's and board policy." Can you just walk me through what that looks like?
Manifestation of a student's disability, basically. Is this student more apt to say, I got a bomb out of his or her disability, like emotional support student, AS student? So that's where that's coming in. So we always have to take that consideration. Is this student a special needs student? Would they intimate that?
Mr. Sickett, can you just speak to, especially if you don't mind, Madam Chair, just so I want to make sure this is clarified.
Just the federal law regulations.
As it relates to students, the manifestation of their disability, if there's a disciplinary matter, you could just explain that to the board, please.
I'll do my best. When you make these false claims, it's, you're breaking the law.
We're talking as space, relates to special education students and talking about complying with the law. Maybe you can refer him to the paragraph in question.
If I may, then perhaps, this is, this issue, when you, when you are, as a district, required to consider whether or not a student who has special needs engaged in a violation of your student code of conduct, whatever it may be, prior to making an expulsion determination, your special education team needs to conduct what is known as a manifestation determination, which is a convening of various committee members who understand the child and may evaluate the child in question and assess whether or not the actions that the child took were indeed a manifestation of their disability. If it was really coming from their disability, or if it wasn't, then they would be subject to the traditional expulsion process. If they, if it is determined that the child's disability impacted this determination, then we would have to invoke special education procedures to find an appropriate placement for the child in lieu of an expulsion. And there are, it's a very heavily regulated process. So in these kinds of situations, whenever a district is faced with those disciplinary issues, a manifestation determination process is initiated.
Thank you. That was really clear. And I wanted it to be clear to the public, and I don't know how we're going to be able to communicate that to those families, you know, they're our most vulnerable, but it's important that they know as well, like if they do, if the child engage in something like that, these are the, this is the process, and these are the repercussions as well. Thank you.
Well, my question is, is going to be, and it has always been, and I can't say what we're doing, what we're not doing, is how engaging are we in terms of getting this point across to our students, even if they're not specialized? Because kids, I'm not, well, I'm just going to say it, kids will be kids, right? And they need to know how serious things like this is. And to start a school year off and hand them a handbook or a piece of paper to say, say, sign this, I don't think that that's enough. Because the world is getting harder, right? And so I would like to see the district more proactive in driving that, to let them know what, that these things are serious. And I understand that we have to take, take a stance, but we also have to make sure that they have an understanding of what it is too.
Absolutely.
Can you share, share about the assemblies that we've been having? Because I know I followed up with that, so, yeah.
So there was two assemblies held, one at Trexler after the second event, where the building administration, as well as the SRO, mostly the building administration, the SRO is a background, talked about what this does, the resources that happen, the level, you know, it's not a misdemeanor, it's a felony, and it's a terroristic act or a terroristic threat, and those are the charges. Likewise, at the high school, they did have a similar assembly brought across all four grade levels where they talked about that. Did it stop the third one? No. But at least it got to the 3,000 students. Maybe it didn't get to two of the 3,000 students, but it got to most of the 3,000 students. So we were very proactive. This week was National Safe Schools Week, so not only did we talk about safe to say at the middle school level and the high school level, we also had a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, that they could use on bomb threats, literally speaking about this, what's going to happen to you if you do it, you know, the resources that are expended, the time you're out of school. It happened during lunch, so now those kids aren't eating, that might have been the only meal of their day, you know, so on and so forth. So we were extremely proactive of trying to convey, guys, you really can't do this. A, it's going to jam you up. B, think about all your other student friends that are now missing lunch, missing class, missing an exam. So it took place in real.
So as long as we're going to, it's going to be ongoing, I mean, you know, like in the beginning, before, we didn't have anything in place. I don't think kids really care about their kids, their friends eating. They don't care about that. But we need to really drive the importance. We care about it because that's the money, right? Time is money. I just wanted to make sure that we were making them a part of this whole process, so they don't feel like, you know, well, I didn't know. Yeah, you don't know, but now you're out of school forever. You know.
Yeah. You know, one of the amazing things, I was speaking to Allen High School principal, and she mentioned that the change that happened in the school recently was due to other students, the upper, upper-level students, having the conversations with the kids and saying, listen, stop playing games. You guys are disrupting. And it's great, right, when those students can step in and say, listen, this is disrupting our education and we need to stop. So maybe we need to start like a mentorship program.
They have to be, they have to be part of the process. If anything, we can sit here and have meeting after meeting after meeting, but if they're not part of the process, we're just, just running in circles.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair. And I just have Ms. Ramos to share comprehensively what we are doing and have done already at the secondary level and reviewing with students their responsibilities as it relates to keeping all of us safe. So Ms. Ramos.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Burks. Just to piggyback on what Dr. Whartonby was saying, some of the things that we've done across the schools, we've had our SROs and our school administration visit, especially ninth-grade classrooms in smaller settings, so we could talk to kids about the things that they should be doing, and then as well as what happens if something like a bomb threat is made that's false. So we did that across all of William Allen High School's ninth grade. We've had assemblies at Trexler where each grade level had an opportunity to meet with administration, and we talked about the importance of language and choice of words and, and that the impact that that can have if you, when you make good decisions, and of course, when you make bad decisions. This week was National Safe Schools Week, so we did a lot of work around our safe to say training. So grade six through 12, every student over the course of this week receives training at the school level on how to report something that they see anonymously so that it can be investigated. And we do get tips where children are concerned about their classmates, and it gives us an opportunity to then support that child while other students can still remain anonymous. So that training is wrapping up this week with our students. We also reinforced our student code of conduct this week to just emphasize that that is something that we follow as a system, but all of our secondary schools this week participated in that training. And we do similar things at the elementary school, it just sounds a little different when we meet with kindergartners and first graders and second graders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion to move these two policies forward.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move those forward. Thank you, Dr. Whartonby. And thank you to APD and the Fire Department for their assistance.
Mr. Nicoloff.
I have a comment. Can I make a comment? I just want to say, you know, this is going on my eighth, I'm finishing up my eighth year, and I can remember having these board meetings, and we weren't on the same page. And so for me to sit here and ask some of the same questions, you know, I'm always going to be who I am. I want to just say thank you to everybody who has actually put the work in to get us to where we are now. Because I like to hear, you know, we sat here, we gave out, I'm not going to tell all the family secrets, but we sat here, we gave out awards, you know, I saw the foundation, we were together, we're talking about the police department, the city, everybody's together. And I, listen, I'm transparent. We weren't always like that. But the thing is, we had our, for lack of a better word, I'm going to use the word fight, but not physical. But we are at a place where we're doing what's right for our kids. And so I just want to say that, you know, I'm happy about that, and I recognize that. We still have a lot of work to do, but we're moving in the right direction. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
I just, one group we did not publicly say thank you to, and I know we mentioned our partners with the city, fire chief, I want to thank all the school leaders, staff, the students, all the families who we band together as a collective community to ensure that we are all safe. You know, to think about this, when Dr. Whartonby mentioned, imagine 3,000 students and hundreds of staff walking down the street together, and all the students went safely, everyone complied, they did what they were supposed to do. And so I just want to thank you for helping to keep, work together to keep our entire learning community safe. So thank you to the school teams.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on non-agenda items? Any old business? New business? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Yeah, can we have too many bathroom, break, please? So let's make that five minutes. That's funny. That's funny. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Education Committee of the whole meeting to order for the Board of Directors for the School District for the City of Allentown for today, which is October 23rd, 2025. I will say to you that the Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of this meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our Board's policy, any persons may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented in resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to our Board Secretary, Mr. Simmerson. Comment cards, again, are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. So at this time, I'm going to ask, let me see. Oh, at this time, we're only taking public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
Not for education.
Okay, so we don't have any. Um, do we have, um, tonight we have seven. Do you have any comments that you want to make?
Just briefly, I, just briefly, thank you, Ms. Conover. I'm looking forward to hearing Ms. Smith talk about our reading league and reading campaign. So I'm excited about that. Focus on literacy. One of our big rocks is supporting literacy. So I'm excited about Ms. Smith's commentary.
I'm excited because if you can read, you can do anything, right?
Yes.
I'm excited too. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to, we have seven, um, agenda items. And if my colleagues do not have a problem with it, since we're going to call Ms. Crystal Perez up, she has two items. Can she do both while she's here? Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam President, members of the School Board and Dr. Burks. I have two memoranda of understanding for your approval this evening. The first is a renewal of our existing affiliation agreement with Millersville University. Millersville offers a school nurse certification program, which many of our nurses who are employed under emergency certification utilize to complete their certification requirements. This partnership directly supports Strategic Plan Priority Two as well as Priority Five. By maintaining this agreement, we continue to invest in developing high-quality school nurses who are well-prepared in the specialty of school health to provide exceptional care to our students. The second MOU is a renewal of our current affiliation agreement with Lehigh Carbon Community College Department of Nursing. This partnership allows LTRIC nursing students to complete clinical experiences within our district. It aligns with the same two strategic priorities, safety and whole child development and talent management and development by creating a mutually beneficial opportunity. Nursing students provide valuable support in our health rooms, assist with student education, and contribute to state-required annual health screenings, all while gaining hands-on experience in school health settings, encouraging them to consider employment with us after completing their programs.
Thank you. The two items that she just discussed was item number one and item number three. There were two affiliation agreements. One was with Miller University and one was with Lehigh Carbon Community College. Um, it, may I have a motion to move this item forward to October, to our next regular Board meeting, which is right after this?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Hearing and seeing none, it moves to our next regular Board meeting. Thank you very much, we appreciate you. Next, I'm going to ask that Mr. Brian Sickitt come forward. And there's a, he's going, there's a presentation and action is required on this. It's regarding unique learning systems.
Good evening, Board of Directors and Dr. Burks.
Good evening.
We're requesting, requesting Board approval for Unique Learning Systems Curriculum to continue this year. This is a request for a one-year renewal. We are recommending this continued implementation of the Unique Learning System, which is a suite of design tools to ensure equitable access, standard-aligned learning for students with cognitive disabilities. Together, these tools advance the district's Priority One, Academic Excellence, and Priority Seven, Technology for Universal Learning Within Lighting the Way, a blueprint, blueprint for innovation and excellence. It provides structure and resources necessary for all educators to deliver rigorous, standard-aligned instruction, personalized learning for diverse needs, and technology as a catalyst for equitable access and student growth. The cost of access, I'm sorry. The cost of the Unique Learning System for the one-year renewal is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty, let me say this again, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ten cents. It will be paid for through access funds.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sickitt. May I have a motion to move this item forward to our regular Board meeting today, tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing and seeing none, this moves forward to our next regular Board meeting, which is completely, is directly after this one. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
There no, no one opposes? Next, I'm going to ask that, uh, Mr. Ryan Yurchuk come forward to discuss Allentown School District Elementary School Art Show.
Good evening, Dr. Burks, School Board of Directors. This evening, I request the Board's approval to partner with the Allentown Art Museum to host the Allentown School District Elementary School Art Show on, starting beginning on Thursday, April 16th through Sunday, May 3rd, 2026. This has, in the past, it would take place at Civic Theater, um, in their, oh my gosh, I forget the name of the space, um, but their auxiliary space across from the theater. This is the opportunity for our students to showcase their artwork in the art museum. And this is no cost to the district. It is simply something that our elementary art teachers saw the need for and worked with the art museum to, uh, to work through an agreement to make happen.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this to our next.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion and questions? All in favor?
Thank you to the art museum.
Oh. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Seeing that no one would oppose, it moves forward to our next regular Board meeting. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask that Dr. Malika Savoy come forward. And she's going to be talking about Turning Point of Lehigh Valley. Did I miss somebody? Gear Up. Oh, I, oh, I'm moving fast, okay. So not Dr. Savoy. We wanted to speak to Ms. Nicole Singer.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Burks. I am here tonight to request the Board's approval of the Action Plan and Budget for the Gear Up Grant for the 2025-26 school year in the amount of $264,790.55. The Pennsylvania State Gear Up Goal is Equitable College Access and Success for Students by increasing student achievement through data-driven decisions, developing a substantial college-going culture, and establishing a shared community vision for equitable college access and success. This is year five of our grant, and this year we focus on 11th graders. Getting college and career ready, encouraging students to take two years of math beyond Algebra I. Gear Up students will demonstrate and increase their STEM identity. Establishing Gear Up as a resource for students, families, and school personnel. Developing a college-going culture and provide leadership opportunities for our students. The grant helps support students in college and career readiness through workshops, mentoring, counseling, tutoring, and college job fairs and tours. Some highlights that we've done so far this year are our college visit to Morgan State U's University. It was the first one that any Gear Up I was ever taken to an HBCU, so I'm proud that we were the ones that got to do that. Ongoing academic counseling in small groups for our students. Mentoring, college visits, and helpful workshops for students to help prepare them for college application processes for admissions and financial support. Some upcoming events include college and career fairs, visits to Bloomberg University and DeSalle's University, the fashion district in the spring, junior achievement, financial literacy workshops, and hands-on simulations for our juniors at Deraf High School. Expressive Path, which is a mentoring of our students to the use of arts and STEM, a family AI workshop, and job site visits to our local businesses. Just to mention, as part of our quarterly benchmarks, we have already met 100% of 12 of our benchmarks, which include things like financial aid counseling, college essay workshops, and leaderships. So once again, I am requesting the Board to approve this action plan.
That sounds good, ma'am. That was good information. May I have a motion to move this item forward to tonight's regular Board meeting? May I have a second? Any discussion or comments?
Who's overseeing the program?
I am.
You are. Way to go.
Yes, you may.
I just want to commend Ms. Singer publicly for leading our Gear Up efforts. Um, so we are definitely moving really quickly and meeting our expectations. And I just want to say I commend you for a job well done, so thank you.
Thank you. When we meet with the state, they have said that Allentown is outshotting the other two schools, so I'm proud of that if with our low, low amount of staff that we have running Gear Up. So we are pushing forward because this is important for our students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to comment.
Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing.
Um, I had a comment, can any, can anyone hear me?
Moves to our reg, our regular Board meeting, which is directly after this one. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Malika Savoy, uh, to come before us and Mrs. Smith can prepare to come behind.
Ms. Conover, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you. We're fix, we're trying to fix it right now. Go ahead, speak.
Okay, Ms. Conover, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe take her off speaker on your phone. I'm sorry, um, what was it? Mrs. Harris?
It's Ms. Harris. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I wanted to, uh, before we got out of that, I want to also commend Ms. Nicole Singer. Um, I have watched the Gear program for the last five years. It went down, it went down, and then it went down. And then Ms. Nicole got it, and she ran with it. This is amazing. All the programs she has done already, hitting those goals already. And then going to Morgan State, eh, fuck, you know? That's great. I hope to see even more HBCUs for our students to go to. So thank you very much, Nicole, and this is the, love the way the direction of this, uh, school district is going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. So now we're going to start, are we going to start over? Um, with Dr. Savoy with their presentation. We appreciate your words.
Good evening again. We are requesting the Board's approval for Turning Point of the Lehigh Valley to provide prevention presentations, group support, and individual counseling to all Allentown School District's secondary schools, middle and high schools. This is a continuation of services that we've received in previous years. This is also aligned to the Strategic Plan, Learning the Way, a Blueprint for Innovation and Excellence 2030, Priority Two. And this is also consistent with our focus on the whole child framework and social-emotional development. This agreement is for the entire school district, again, at a district level, but we're focusing on the secondary schools. They also offer 24-hour crisis helpline services, and they provide guidance and consultation to staff in addition to directly supporting students.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to move this item forward to tonight's regular Board meeting?
Second.
We have a, a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Hearing and seeing none, this moves to our next regular Board meeting right after this one. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Melissa Smith, are you there?
Good evening, Board of Directors. Good evening, Dr. Burks. As you know, literacy is one of our major priorities of our school district. We are looking to build a culture of reading across our school district that extends beyond the classroom and into the daily lives of our students. We have been doing that through several different initiatives. One is the Superintendent's Reading Challenge, which we are in our, um, Fall Into a Good Book Challenge right now, where since October second, we have read six hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine minutes as a learning community.
Wow.
So we are very excited. That challenge continues through November sixteenth, so we will see those numbers increase. In a few weeks, we will be launching the Superintendent's Book Club, and you are going to be so excited by what we will be doing with the Superintendent's Book Club. And tonight, as another part of our building a reading culture in our school district, I'm requesting your approval to purchase twenty-five book vending machines, and we do have a slide that shows you what book vending machines look like, um, with fifty book replacement sets to support literacy engagement across elementary, middle, and high schools at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. So each school will have a book vending machine that they will work with the company to design the look of their book vending machine, and each school will have the opportunity to select the books that go into their book vending machine so that it matches the, what the readers in that school want. Because what the readers at Allen want may not be the same books that the readers at Deraf want. So schools within their school community will be selecting the books that go into our vending machines. This is important because we're providing on-demand access for books that students can keep. It will help foster that culture of learning. It enhances our home libraries and strengthens the connection between literacy and a positive school culture. This is aligned to our strategic Priority One, Academic Excellence, as well as Priority Five, Empowering Families and Strengthening Partnerships. Students will be able to earn tokens to use to access the books in the vending machines.
This is awesome. My question is, well, or maybe it's a call to action for the community, because I really want to incentivize this. I would love for the community, whether it's businesses, to incentivize this, where they can actually give tokens.
Tokens, yeah, that part.
Tokens to students. Or even if they read up to five to ten books, maybe they can get a free haircut. Or, you know, things like that, like, I, I know you have the business lead going on, and that's, that was really good, by the way. Um, so I really wanna incentivize this, because I think it's, it's gonna be a great thing to move the needle in literacy, so I'm excited about that.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Please.
Since we're calling to action, of anyone who is listening in the public, and if you'd like to donate books or resources, monetary resources, we are accepting. And you can send, um, your contributions, or your email, or any way you wanna communicate commitment to this effort to, uh, Ms. Lindsay Parks, parksL@allentownSD.org, Ms. Lindsay Parks.
So did I hear you say donate books too, in addition to money?
Yes.
So, because, you know, I've been places in, in spaces where people are doing like the worst, they're cutting the pages out of books and making jewelry boxes and stuff out of books. And so that means that we're gonna start using books again? And this is not replacing our library, it's just an extension of what we. I have to ask these questions, because I wanna make sure that we're all clear on it. This is a great thing.
Mm-hmm.
This is wonderful. May I have a motion to move?
I make the motion. I like reading.
Second. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, this moves to our next regular board meeting. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
I'd like to call to order the.
Wait, 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 wait. We gotta close this one out first.
Oh, sorry.
So you're on point. I know that's right.
Miss Phoebe is on there.
Um, are there any comments or any knowledge of them items? Any old business? Any new business?
Yes, yes. Hello?
You have new business or old business?
Old.
Okay.
Okay, prior to two thousand seventeen, well, let's say this, there's been a lot of outrage about our education, about how the administration has handled our student education, um, questioning it, and for our, you people, and I'm sick of it. Prior to two thousand seventeen, we had, okay, especially with, I'm gonna go with the teachers, with education. We had two hundred and fifty teachers' furload. Two hundred and fifty teachers' furload. Gone. Okay, and then all of a sudden, like I said, Lucky Charms magically delicious, we found eighteen million dollars. Where was the outrage for that? Where was the outrage for those board members that were on that board? Let two hundred and fifty teachers go, and then all of a sudden find eighteen million dollars. Where was that outrage? Where was the outrage when Lisa, Cheryl, and myself got on that board in two thousand seventeen, and then on our first board meeting we went to, we heard about the failure of our ninth graders? Where was the outrage? Where? I could give many, many examples of why we were failing our students. We didn't have a standard curriculum. But that was okay with y'all. But now you're gonna go after a superintendent who's actually given us, we had that evaluation job, we are now implementing that standardized education. Bringing forth more activities, more things for our students, more opportunities than any superintendent has ever done. But y'all wanna say something. I'm sick of it. Stop it. You know, our president, God bless her, Ms. Andrew, you're very nice. I ain't being nice. This needs to stop. Whatever y'all doing on Facebook, quit it.
So let me just say this, Ms. Harris, may I?
Oh, no, may I say this? May I say this, because this is all y'all on education.
Yeah, but I just wanna remind you, I just wanna remind you that this is our meeting, so you're talking to us, but people are listening, right?
Right, absolutely. So with our meeting and, and our people listening, please, come on now. This woman is doing what she needs to do. This board is doing what it needs to do. We are educating the whole child. The whole child. Ms. Lisa, I remember what you said about a standardized curriculum, a standardized, standardized education. That's what you ran on. And that's what you leaving on.
I ran on setting the standard. I ran on setting the standard.
Setting the standard, yes.
Setting the standard.
Setting the standard, standard, and now look at how you leaving. The standard has been met.
We're not all the way there yet.
Done, but quite a bit more than we ever did when we started out in two thousand seventeen.
So I do wanna say that I, you know, not to come to anybody's, I wanna add, so I'm not apologetic, because you know me, I'm gonna be very transparent. But I do remember, just for the board members who weren't here, um, when we came on the board, we were told things like our kids couldn't learn.
Yes.
We discovered that we had lost the whole ninth grade. That the ninth graders that was there, they would be lost. We would, we were just told a lot of things. And I'm not trying to go backward, because this is the reason why I paused earlier, to celebrate the, where we are now. You know, I don't want folks to, I don't want folks to dwell on the past because we're moving forward, but I'm not, I don't forget the fact, and that's why it's very important that when I do get off the board, it's not about me, but all of us are gonna leave at some point, that we continue to press and to make sure that we don't go back to where we were. We were told that we had, um, now I'm having some flashbacks. The deficit that we had, we told when we got to twenty, year twenty-twenty-six, that there wouldn't be a school district. You know, and so I remember, I don't know if you remember, Ms. Harris, there was always nine, what was it, nine thousand?
Ten million dollars, ten million dollars.
Yeah, I always say that's the same number.
Oh, whatever.
So the reason why, so I, I, I can't sit here and act like what you're saying is not true. All right? But what I can say is that Allentown has gotten better. And if we're gonna continue to get better, because I don't follow Facebook, so I don't know about that. My job tries to make me go on there sometimes. But I don't follow Facebook, because I try to stay in a positive space and place. So we're not gonna make it about one person. Let's make it about our kids in the community. Let's continue to do what it is so that they can be successful. We heard a lot of successful stuff tonight, and I'm proud about it. When I get off this board, I'm gonna, I wanna continue to hear successful stuff. I have plans on reaching out to you, Dr. Burks, to say to you and, and, and everybody else, what do we need so that we can continue to carry this torch? But I'm not gonna ever forget where we were. I'm not gonna hold it against anybody. I'm not gonna make this out to be political. All right? I had to get here by way of politics, but I'm anointed and appointed, and I'm always gonna stand on it. So let's not go back there. We've done a lot, and I wanna see that we get better, better at what we doing. You know, I don't want the mess. And so I thank you, Ms. Phoebe, I'm hearing you, what you said is true, so it's not, it's not a lie. But I'm looking forward to going, and don't you get stuck in the politics. You stay focused and do what it is that we have to do for our kids, because our kids is our community.
Yes.
We only got here by way of politics, but not every one of us is a politician. And that's what, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Ms. Harris, and you.
Okay, and that's fine too, but as well, not all of us politicians, but we are advocates.
Amen.
We're all advocates for these children. Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you so much. Are there any grass catchers? Hearing, none? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Some moves.
All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
Building.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to call to order the building committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of this school district for the city of Allentown for today, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda or, and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards may, may be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered, or on other matters affecting the, affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Board Secretary, Mr. Simonsen. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Um, Dr. Burks, you have any remarks?
No, thank you very much. I think Ms. Dr. Wharton B. is gonna have a team present, so thank you.
At this time, we are only taking public comment on agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note the remarks are limited to three minutes, and the microphone will be disabled at the end of three minutes. Please also be informed, the School Board of Directors appreciates public comment. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concern. Are there any comment cards?
Robert E. Smith, Jr.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Robert E. Smith, Jr., I live at ten sixty East Gordon Street, Allentown, PA, about a block away from the, where the new school's gonna be. Quickly, on item one, the public hearing, first of all, I wanna thank Dr. Robert Wharton B. for telling me where it's gonna be. Thank you. Very kind of him. Some quick ones, cost of the contracts at the public hearing, I'd like to know exactly, and the public should know exactly how much the contract is, how much is in the contingency fund? Exactly whatever tariffs they claim, the company, we need documentation of every penny that they're claiming that is due for the tariff. This is like an open check that they have with this tariff. They can claim tariffs for this, tariffs for that. That's only out of the country. If they get most of the merchandise and anything they need in the country, there's no tariffs. So please make sure it's documented anytime they claim that there's tariffs. Also, the traffic logistics, a major concern in the area is gonna be major traffic. There's gonna be three to five hundred new homes up there, our school, there's not many outlets. We need to do an engineering. I know they're gonna do this, but we gotta really pay attention on the traffic jam that's gonna be caused on the east side from this new school. And lastly, certified payroll for anybody working on the site. Certified payroll is very important, so they don't charge us any no-show jobs, like you see in The Sopranos. Anyway, PowerPoint, not PowerPoint, item four. I'm concerned about SiteLog IQ. See, they're not even accredited with the Business, Better Business Bureau. Now, I get that that's not a deal breaker, but I think it's a concern. And that's why these meetings about the committee, and if we had two weeks to vet this, and I'm not saying no one didn't vet it, but I just want you to know, they're not accredited with the Better Business Bureau, so you gotta watch out. And this is all public information. You can get this on the, the website, and I researched it today. Negative, negative aspects of SiteLog include issues with leadership, poor employee onboarding and training, a toxic or disorganized work environment, according to some employee reviews. There are also complaints from clients about the company over-promising and under-delivering, particularly in the underserved, uh, school areas. Poor management. Some employees report poor leadership, lack of direction, and they push and pull from management due to constant flux. Lack of training and onboarding. There are numerous complaints about a lack of proper onboarding, training, and support, making it difficult for new hires to acclimate. Toxic work environment, environment. Some reviews mentioning toxic, fearful, or non-inclusive environment with bullying, especially for women. High turnover. Some employees cite high turnover possibly due to lack of culture and accountability. High workload. A fast-paced and long hours are mentioned as a stressful aspect of the job for some. Over-promising and under-delivering. Some clients, particularly in, in the schools that they've worked on, have reported that SiteLog IQ have over-promised services and failed to deliver, leading to dissatisfaction. SiteLog, to their credit, has acknowledged some of these issues in responses to employee reviews, stating they are working on improving training culture and management support. Thank you.
Thank you. Or is there any more? Tonight, we have three action items and two discussion items. The first three items are action items. Dr. Wharton B. is requesting approval from the School Board of Directors to authorize a public hearing to be held in conjunction, in conjunction with the new K through eight school as required with Act thirty-four and the Pennsylvania Public School Code.
You just perfectly, uh, aligned what I was gonna say. So tonight, we have to go through a process through the Pennsylvania Department of Education called Act thirty-four. Act thirty-four is a remnant of the PlanCon process. If you guys recall, uh, other projects that the school district did, PlanCon was a way of getting some funds back from the state for the expenses that you put towards a construction project. We are not getting money back from the state for construction, but they left this last vestige, uh, in the, in the laws, basically, that a public school, a public school district, when building a property, has to go through a public process. And to your point, Mr. Smith, this public process affords the community, come to the table and listen to what's going on with this, uh, new project. So, uh, in compliance with the Act thirty-four, the Allentown School District will hold a formal hearing on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, to present the proposed Allentown Academy, the K through eight school. During this hearing, the district will outline educational needs, project scope and design, estimated construction, and total project cost, as well as financing, including any potential tax impact. When I talk about in ta, uh, tax impact, we're talking about taking out bonds for, for the project. So that's what we're looking to do. And if you were to approve this tonight, that means tomorrow morning, we will advertise, literally in the morning call, the project, allowing people to see it, allowing people to go to our website and see it, and inviting them on the seventeenth of November to attend the, uh, the Act thirty-four hearing.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this item? Is it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Wharton B. is also requesting approval from the School Board of Directors, the Transportation Memorandum of Understanding Between the School District of Allentown and East Stroudsburg University for the transportation of Allentown School District students. and East Stroudsburg University for the Transportation of Allentown School District Students for Upward Bound.
Now, this is one that I need to thank Dr. Savoy for. This is her program. The transportation's incidental to the 50 kids that are attending this program. The reason why we have an MOU is East Stroudsburg asked us to transport their students because the, the bus service they were gonna get was basically gonna be over budget, and they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to finance it, nor would they be reimbursed through this trio grant. But at $13,500, which is our cost to transport two buses, 50 kids, they were able to do so. So, we entered into an MOU with them, 'cause we're transporting kids from our district to East Stroudsburg University and back. So, it's literally, you know, just a transportation MOU. But I think the bigger picture here is absolutely that we have 50 kids going to this Saturday college program. That's amazing. That's amazing. You know, to get on a bus isn't a big deal. Getting 50 kids to get an education in advance of graduating, big deal. So, thank you.
May I have a motion to move this item forward to our next board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Wharton B. is also requesting approval of the SiteLogic to provide an on-call construction management professional services for the future capital programming and construction needs of the Allentown School District.
So, Dr. Burks mentioned in our opening remarks that we're embarking on a great opportunity, both educationally and from an infrastructure perspective. We are starting to invest. For many years, I believe Dr. Burks said, well over 20 years, the investment in the buildings from a warm, safe, dry perspective haven't always been there. A lot of times, that's because, is it books or is it bricks? And a lot of time, books wins over bricks. So, that, that's important to note. The other thing that's important to note, what we did here by going out to bid for on-call construction management services is considered professional services. Typically, you do not have to go out to bid for professional services. I think Ethan and I come from a place where it's always good to see what's out there. You know, see who the pool of people who can work for the school district, who want to work for the school district, compete against each other to work for the school district, and in this case, Allentown School District. SiteLogic, in my experience, and I have worked with them in other school districts, always have been on time, on budget, very professional. I don't know what's said on Facebook or other social media platforms about their management, or, you know, I can't ascertain if a, if a person who was employed by SiteLogic maybe mean, have major disagreements with them and they're posting it. But I can tell you, as somebody who has worked with SiteLogic, I do find them competent. I do find them credible. I do find them very professional. And I think they would be a good team member. The other aspect of having an on-call construction manager, you also want that breadth of knowledge. They're a very large firm. And, you know, they're probably, if you're looking at the Better Business Bureau, they're probably under Reynolds Construction as opposed to SiteLogic. That's where they might be, 'cause they were acquired, probably what, two years ago or something like that, by SiteLogic. So, they might still be under Reynolds. With that said, and the amount of work that we're gonna be doing, we need that type of professionalism. We need that type of expert knowledge in the industry. There is a lot of construction going on in the Lehigh Valley, specifically Allentown. There's a lot of competition for the trades, the various building trades. We need to have a strong colleague that will say, you know what? We do have those trades out there that are willing to do your school as opposed to one of the high rises going up. So, we have to be cognizant of that. We have to know that this firm could be, leverage that opportunity. So, that's why we would like to go with SiteLogic. Just to let you know, we had eight bids come in. We did a thorough analysis, all eight bids. We went through a matrices on what that looks like, and SiteLogic was the preeminent person in this, in the review of the bids.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this item forward?
Make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion. As the Chair of the Building Committee, our focus is in ensuring physical responsibility, transparency, alignment with ASC's long-term capital planning priorities. These political, these potential athletic and facility projects that abound approach to investment, sequence to maximum educational and community benefit. We reinforce the district's commitment to, to be responsible spending, responsible spending and transparent communication throughout all phases of planning and construction. We highlight the future investment approach to the William Allen Wharton as the sustainable solution addresses long-term construction problems. Because we do know that the Allen Pool has been leaking for years. My fiancee is graduated in 1979, and it was leaking then. Acknowledgement, the total major construction projects, you know, it's gonna be about $230 million. And ensure each project is aligned with ASC's blueprint for the innovation and excellence 2030. Recognize the collaboration between the facility, finance, community, stakeholders to deliver value for our students and taxpayers. While the final budget and timeline have yet, have yet to be decided and defined, we are currently estimating that William Allen Wharton will cost about $18.4 million, and it'll take 36 months to design and construct. The Deer Practice Field is estimated to cost between, uh, $7.5 million and $15 million, depending on the field, um, is to the law and also the earth return. The time to design and construct the practice field is apparently 41 miles. The J. Bernie Crumb Stadium House will cost about $7.5 million with an additional $1.5 million to replace the existing turf and track.
Ms. Phoebe, I think we did move on from that presentation before that, so I think we, we need to vote on this one and then-
Right, okay, well, this is, this is, these are things, these are things that, that, that these is what is going to be doing. That's why we're voting.
Okay.
Um, and, and you need to know, 'cause we have a number in there. So, and then the last thing is the various little schools and elementary school field and place, space improvements will cost about 800 K to about $1.1 million, which will probably take about 12 months, 12 months to design. So, we, we, what it comes down to, remember, we at Allentown, we are educating the whole child. Thank you. Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
What was her point? Oh, she was on the next question. So, Ms. Ha, can I ask a question? Ms. Harris, I know, um, this is the, the next thing, but was, I wanna, I'm trying to figure out, did you go ahead of yourself, or did you wanna make a point on what you just talked about? Was it, did it, was it pertaining to what we were talking about?
Yes.
Can you share that with me?
Okay, um, 'cause we were pointing on number three, right?
Yes. So, I'm trying to figure out how did that relate, how what you're saying.
I am, I am, I'm sorry.
All right, so we got clarity. We're gonna move to the next. Thank you so much.
But you already heard me, so.
You heard, you're right. We don't wanna hear you again, but we heard you.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
I only could be me. I don't, try.
That's all right, Ms. Lisa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. The last two items are for discussion only. Dr. Wharton B. has a presentation and discussion of proposed capital improvement projects for Allentown School District's athletic facilities. And last, Dr. Wharton B. has a PowerPoint presentation called Walk Through Animation on the design of the Family Engagement and Resource Center.
Thank you very much. So, my cheeks are hurting. Ms. Harris, thank you very much. Appreciate the preamble. Oh, you didn't vote.
No, we didn't.
I'm sorry, everybody. I'm so, please forgive me.
You did that, that you did.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say. We need to vote on that, so we can move on to, to the field. I think we're at the all-in-favor.
All in favor, please let it be known.
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So, uh, over the last couple of weeks, Ethan and I, and a lot of the team, and Dr. Burks, Ms. Ramos, been talking about what type of infrastructure should we include in our priorities. What also came up during this time is not just the physical building, but land, right? Athletic fields, playgrounds, fields where the middle school kids play, and the condition of those fields. So, in looking at that, we started to develop a budget and an idea on what can be entailed in, you know, this feasibility. So, the feasibility study, by way of background, started all the way back in 2021, when Breslin Architects shared with the Board and with the administration at that time the vision for athletics and fields and so on and so forth. So, what we did is put together from that moving forward to today. You know, we're looking at approximately 130, let me start at the first one, project considerations. We have two current projects. One, we talked about back in August, which is the new K-8, which is about $136 million. And the next one is the Family Engagement Resource Center, which we'll be talking about next, which is around $12 million. Both are estimates. We don't have construction estimates in yet, 'cause we haven't awarded any construction contracts at this point. So, then we started looking at beyond the two projects that are ongoing and looking at the 2025 feasibility study that Breslin Architects did. And we identified several projects that we would like to initiate. One is Sonia Sotomayor renovations and additions. As the Board may be aware, right now Sonia Sotomayor is K-2. We're looking to expand that in other classroom, uh, in other class grade, in other cohort. Well, that's gonna require some expansion of the existing facilities, be it through temporary classroom units or a building expansion. The next thing we've heard about is William Allen Pool. Ms. Phoebe said her fiance remembers the pool leaking in 1979. So, that well exceeds the 20 years that we thought. And if that's factual, wow, right? It hasn't been taken care of for 50 years, almost. Well, not quite 50. Bridgeview Academy renovations and additions. You will be seen in the next PowerPoint presentation for the Family Engagement Resource Center that is attached to the Bridgeview Academy. As you recall, two months ago also, we hired an architect, KCBA, to start developing plans for the renovations of that building. That's gonna cost some money. Now, we have the Deerfield High School Athletic Practice Field. This one is kinda dear to me, only because I do hear from the Athletic Director and other coaches from Deerfield, as well as Jeffrey Schmidt, the building principal, of the dire need for their own facility. Currently, they come over here to play football, practice football, soccer, and other athletics over to the J. Bernie Crumb Stadium. They do not have their own practice facility. The facility that was their practice facility was built on an old quarry that became a dump, not necessarily a land dump, but they put stuff in the hole. That degrades over time, so the field is very bumpy. You will definitely twist an ankle, blow a knee, so you really can't have sports on that. We want to use that field. Currently, they do use the Andre Reed Park as their athletic field. We need our own field. We need an exclusive field just for Deerfield. Next one's J. Bernie Crumb Fieldhouse. Fieldhouse is as old as the stadium, and it's definitely in need of repair. So, you're gonna see a slide on that. And then, obviously, what I call the warm, safe, dry projects. Warm, safe, dry to me is the building safe or the kids safe, but more importantly, is the building envelope, the structure free from the elements, the outside elements that will degrade your building quickly if there's a roof leak, so on and so forth. Yes, our average building is from 1933. Yes, our oldest building was built during Ulysses S. Grant's administration. But school districts in general have an ability to keep on getting more life out of their structures. So, we're gonna be looking at that, too. Moving forward, the why, our athletic and play spaces are extensions of learning. And they really are. It teaches discipline. It teaches camaraderie. It teaches how to get along. It teaches complex math. If you think about it, a football play is complex math. It has the offense and the defense, and you have to know how to play it. It strengthens communities. It shows physical stewardship if we start showing investment in these properties. So, what we need to do and what our next steps are, and let me back up for a minute. We met with the, when I say we, the, the Building Committee met with a good portion of the Athletic Committee to talk about this. And then, after that, the Building Committee met to start aligning, you know, what this discussion was about. So, prioritizing projects, we're gonna launch a survey. If you guys approve this tonight, I have a host of questions that I'll share with Dr. Burks. They could be open-ended questions, or they can be liker questions. Liker questions, do you agree, do you disagree, you know, neutral, stuff like that. So, I have that. And then, obviously, we would have to come back to you, the Board, to say, this is our prioritization based on our conversations. Do you agree? If you agree, can we move forward? The pool, I'm not gonna read this slide, but it is $18,000 worth of investment. I mean, 18 million. That 18 million is to rebuild the entire pool structure, not relocate it, but to take out the existing pool well, if you think of the bathtub, if you will, and rebuild it so it doesn't leak. That is $18 million, 'cause you're doing it in place. That's, you know, the kids are gonna be taking their classes. We're gonna be redoing the pool. Obviously, the weight room below will have to be relocated, and Mr. Yurchek and I are working on that. 36 months from design to ribbon cutting to jumping in the pool and getting wet. This is the Deerfield Practice Field. This is the existing site. So, it's a very compact, tight site. It does fit a regulation football field. It does fit a non-regulation track. So, you won't be able to host PIAA events on there, but you will be able to have track practice. Fieldhouse would have to be redone. If you notice, there are some ancillary uses for track and field sports, discus, high jump, uh, long jump, broad jump. And then, the, the little fieldhouse in the upper right-hand corner would also get redone. So, we're talking about 7.5 to 10 million. Excuse me, retract that. 15 million. When I say 15 million, that is a turf field, artificial turf. The seven to 10 would be grass. So, there, you know, there's a decision that has to be made.
Madam Chair, may, Dr., did you have a clarifying question?
I have a question. I thought that that's, why do we jump over to, go back to William Allen? You talking about putting all this money into William Allen, but I thought that was like, um, ancient. We was getting rid of it. We was gonna try to do something better.
So, we're not suggesting that we're repairing any of these items? We're just, this is informational for the Board to understand, uh, how, the costs, and that we've done a feasibility study, so we're not asking you to make any decisions.
I understand it, but I'm just trying to figure out what we have in the conversation. But maybe the public didn't know. But how old is the school?
What is it?
1970?
No, that's the pool, the pool. Okay, I'm not sure how old the school is. Do you know?
Early 1900s.
It's one of those schools that we had on the list that we were gonna have to get rid of, right?
It was never on the list, but it-
It was on the list before you got here.
Okay.
So, we, we had already established that this was like, this was ancient. We didn't decide what we're gonna do, but it was on a list. So, you're telling us how much it would cost us? I feel like I'm going on a dummy run, in a good way. I'm sorry. Excuse my language. Sometimes it just comes out. So, you're telling us how much it would cost us to put into this ancient piece of- Right? So, it doesn't make sense.
Well, right now, we're just informing you.
So, we're informing, but, but I'm gonna tell you, it doesn't make sense. Because if the school is no good, it doesn't make sense to put $18 million in it. And I'm not good at math. Would you agree?
Does that mean it take, it will take 36 months to make the repairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm looking at-
Design, well, it's from design to ribbon cutting.
But we're looking at the price that it's gonna cost. Why would you put $18.4 million into a building that needs to be knocked down?
And those are the options that we're presenting to you, so.
So, this is the, so you're telling us this stuff first, and then later on, I hope we're gonna talk about the building.
No, the building's not, and this is all athletics right now. We're not talking about-
But this is athletics in a building that is barely, well, I shouldn't say that. In a building that we're gonna probably have to do something with.
We're gonna have to do something with all our buildings.
Exactly, but we're talking about this one, so I wanna be able to say, we're talking about putting $18.4- talking about putting 18.4 million. We're talking about that's what the cost would be to fix that situation over.
To get a new pool.
To get a new pool.
Right. And those are the options. The options
I guess I know too much, right?
No, and I
No, there's nothing wrong with that, Ms. Lisa, because we got like five projects we have to do with schools, and then that's 10 years, and that's before the William Allen building. Because at least they're standing.
It would be cheaper to bust them to another facility that has a brand-new pool than to actually put 18 million dollars in.
And we are also looking into that as well.
I know Dr. Burks wanted to say something.
Please, let me just do a little context setting. Okay, so, and I apologize to the board, and I should have done a little context setting, but I thought it would evolve from the beginning of the presentation. So as a district, we've conducted feasibility studies, one was in 2021, and most recently in 2022. And we enlisted the support of our architects to do that. So as we were aware, recently, there was lots of discussion about the pool at William Allen High School. That's been leaking for, Ms. Phoebe says 50 years, but from some of the studies I've read, it's been 20, but we'll go in the middle, 35, a long time. So we'll say. And so some of the, within the feasibility study, there were some projects that were, rose up to the top as of needing, sorry, the building committee, athletic committee as well convened and talked about those projects. We included our athletic directors, of course, our school board members who were part of that committee, as well as Dr. Wartanby and others, and looked at the projects. And I asked them to put a cost so that you, the board, would understand. So when people are asking, and we want to be transparent to the public, well, why aren't they fixing this? Why aren't they doing that? Here's what it costs. And our vision is that we have our collective community determine where our priorities should be, given the knowing what the dollars are. So we asked the athletic directors to help, as well as that committee members, to come up with some questions. We will survey people. We will have some focus groups with these, with these communities that are here, so that we can give the board informed recommendation. So it won't be, well, what priorities, we ask, this is the communities, these, these schools are the community schools. And we want them to understand if we do this, well, there are other repairs in the schools. And so what's the priority? And as administration, we don't want to make that decision, because we know that people are like, oh, what? As a community, we want to make that decision.
Thank you.
So this one, we already talked about. This is the, oh, what the, okay, I apologize. This is the Deerife Practice Field. So we talked about that one already. Next one is the Jay Bernie Crumb Stadium. This is just an artist's rendering. This is what Dr. Burks was talking about, the feasibility study that was done in 2021 by Breslin Architects. So that there's this fieldhouse, so the bottom portion would be where the locker rooms are and where public restrooms are. Upper portion is really weight room that's currently underneath the pool. So that is about 7.5 million. In concert with that, the existing track and field is at the end of its useful life. It's about 10 to 13 years old. That's the useful life for a field that's used a lot. And it's used a little more because Deerife also uses it. So it's not just being used by William Allen. It's also by, used by Deerife. So almost the double amount of athletics is taking place on this field. So you're talking about almost $10 million worth of investment for the stadium alone. And again, that's 35 months, because you got to design, you got to bid, you got to build, you go to get all the permits, and it just takes that long when you're done. The middle schools, you got the Third Street Field down by American Parkway, and then you got the field across from Union Terrace. They both need some work. The one on the Harrison Morton Middle School Field, the Third Street Field, could probably use up to 300 to $850,000 worth of improvement. And that type of improvement is obviously fixing the surface, adding, adding electric. There's no electric at the site. There's no water to the site. There's no restroom to the site, so that might be incorporated there. Likewise, for the UT Field, the Union Terrace Field, it, it needs, it needs work. Right now, it's not bad, but it's getting older. It's getting used. If you can see the brown patches in the field, that's where most people congregate when you're playing sports. Think of all the people in front of a goal line. Think of all the people in front of a soccer goal. They're always congregated there, so that's where you're going to have the most action. So that needs work to approximately $230,000 to $500,000 worth of work. We can't neglect our elementary schools. A lot of our play structures are aging. They're older. Few of our schools have newer play equipment. Most do not. So Sonia Sotomayor needs new play equipment. They still have a metal, a silver metal slide. If anybody went down a slide during the summer and it's silver metal, you know exactly what that feels like. And if you go down in the middle of winter, you know exactly what that feels like. Our friends at Washington Elementary, they do not have a playground. They have that McAdam parking lot. Well, it's cordoned off half of parking, half of it's play. So they're playing on asphalt. So the pictures to the right are just graphics of what both could be in terms of play area. And believe it or not, play structures are expensive. The one for Sonia Sotomayor came in at 291,000. We talked them down to about 200, 250,000. And that's by subtracting out certain types of play equipment. It's not going to be any cheaper for Washington Elementary. And any questions? I think you had a great question. Thank you. So that is, that is the presentation where we are at with some of our athletic field and play area feasibility. And to parrot off of Dr. Burks, these aren't projects yet. These are ideas. These are what bubbled up to the surface. These are what Mr. Ryan and I have been talking about, and the AD directors, what their needs are. Yes, the next step is to ask our community, what do you think? To your point, 1970 building, pool's been leaking since Ms. Phoebe's fiance has been there. Is it necessary? Those conversations were had last week with the ADs. So we are looking at all different fronts on how to best address our needs, student needs, the community needs. Thank you.
There was been a problem with the track field since my kid was playing on it. So my thing is, do we know, is that, what are we going to do with it? I, I saw that, but what is our plan B? Do we have one?
Can, can you be a little bit more specific about plan B?
So you know where they, where they practice, you know the problems with, with the, for, for the Deerife Track. You know the problems in that park. What is it? What's the name of the park?
Oh, Andre Reed.
Andre Reed, Andre Reed Park?
No, I don't think that's the one. It's the one that they practicing. Remember the one where it was like the dirt? They had to do something with the dirt? Yeah, it's the practice field. You know what I'm talking about, right? What is the name of it? Is it K?
Deerife.
Kek. Is that, I think that's Kek. Are we doing any, where are they practicing? Like, what are we doing? Because we want them to, yeah. And part of me for not knowing names, but I know what I'm talking about.
They're currently, they are bused down to Third Street Field along American Parkway.
Okay.
So that Harrison Morton Field, that's where they've been practicing. They no longer, as of last year, they stopped practicing at Kek Park just because of the safety and
So we're going to keep that going for this year, until we figure it out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so just, so the board will come back with more information. The questions we'll share with you in our whole process for public engagement. So we just want to inform you the costs. And to put into context, as you know, our budget is 480, almost a half a billion dollars. And some of the collective of these repairs that we're looking at could cost us half, 250 or so million dollars. So we have to make some decisions and prioritize. So we'll come back to the board with more information.
All right. I'm very excited to present to you the Family Engagement and Resource Center. This has been a year in the planning. We are finally at a point to share some ideas. We've been lucky to have a pre-bid meeting for going out to bid for construction, and we got 40 people to show up to this pre-bid meeting. Mind you, when we talk about this, this is not a large project. This is 13,000 square feet of new building. To get 40 trades to come out and be excited about the project, thank you, Mr. Ethan, was amazing when he told me 40 people showed up. Projects as large as a 202,000-square-foot K through eight will probably have about 40 interested contractors to come. So that just shows a testament to people wanting to work with Allentown School District. So with that said, we're going to start the presentation. This is the Family Engagement and Resource Center. We do have the architectural group here tonight, as well as Barry Iset. They'll introduce themselves. So please, Sarupa.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Tired, I suppose, but I'll make it quick. But I'm excited about it. I'm Sarupa Saman. I'm architect for, from DI Group Architecture. With me, I have senior project manager, Lori, Lori Anne, and our architect designer, Evan, as well as Bob Carr from Barry Iset. We were hired for doing Welcome Center initially by Allentown School District. And as we started talking to the group, as we started talking to the group and understanding how intense this program is in this small footprint, pretty soon, the design team realized, design team, by design team, I mean our team, as well as Allentown School District's design team, realized that it is not a welcome center. It is a family engagement and resource center. And that's how we started working towards it. I'm going to have Lori Anne speak more on the project overview.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lori Anne Jones. The presentation that we prepared for you is to give you a working overview of the project. So we've divided that into a couple of segments. We'll talk first about the purpose, context, the alignment with your strategic goals and the program inside of the building. We'll then move on to show you floor plans and site plans of the building. And in each turn, we'll show you some concept images so that you can envision that 2D image into a 3D space. We'll then zoom back out to some logistics, talk about budget and schedule. And then we'll return back to bring it all together and show you an animated walkthrough of how the space can feel when it's living and breathing with your constituents inside of it. So to start with the purpose and context, as Sarupa mentioned, the project really transformed as we began to work with you. This is our introductory project to the Allentown District, and we're grateful for this opportunity to work with you. Hope this is one of many projects to come. So the purpose of this project, as is stated there, is to establish a new family and community resource center. We really appreciate your look on this, treating the whole mission, the whole person, the whole child, the whole family, as part of what this building is supposed to represent to your community. The location, as Dr. Wartanby mentioned earlier, is the Bridgeview Academy site. So we'll see the site plan later of where this building will be as an addition on the Union Street side of that building, the northern side of that building. And you'll see how it connects to the existing Bridgeview Academy. We also have a number of funding surfaces that are being looked through. We just mentioned the partial funding amount coming through from the PBDA grant that was sought after at the inception of this project. And we'll also see, as we go through the budget, how the, the intensity of the program and the size of the building continue to grow as we develop the budget from your original concept into what it is today. So to make the vision into a reality, we just listed a number of the program points that are the part of the physical spaces that you're going to see as we walk you through the plan. So obviously, one of the main functions that we understood from you is an enrollment and registration center, a sort of one-stop shopping for that. And we'll walk you through the portions of the building that incorporate that aspect. We also have interacted with you and your partners in terms of Lee Havali Health and what you envision for a, you know, a modest, but very necessary health and mental and physical health hub within the building. So we do have some healthcare space that we'll show you when we walk through the plan. We also know that there are a number of resources that we've provided space for in working with you within the building. So you'll see that. We've spoken with your workforce development partner and talked with the overall team on those resource spaces. And then the building also has a flexible space in a large multipurpose room to extend your real estate holding in that regard of meeting spaces that you have. The next portion of the project, we'll talk about the alignment with your strategic plan and your lighting-the-way blueprint. And so I'll hand it over to Dr. Wartanby to speak about that.
Great. Thank you very much. So the benefits of this design, the benefits of this program, the benefits of this building is centralized student registration. That was one thing that the team and that Dr. Burks drove in the initiative for the development. The other, when we talk about student registration, it's also one place to register your kids for busing. So now it's housed in one location. Right now, registration's done at the school level. It's going to be done at one central location. Busing also is done at the school level and then comes back to Mr. Krahulik Knapp to compile. It's going to be done there. Next thing is the healthcare suite. Lori Anne talked about that. The healthcare suite is a partnership. That partnership is going to be aligned with the school district. It's going to be aligned with students' needs and possibly their parents' needs. Workforce development. We talked about the trades before. We talked about encouraging the trades to be part of the Allentown School District. Workforce development will be located downstairs in the facility. They'll have their own space where we can do that adult English classes, where we can talk about jobs, where we can teach them how to write a resume and to look for jobs and to do interviews. So this building is going to be a central hub, to Lori Anne's word, where a lot of this stuff will happen under one roof, as opposed to 28 different buildings are coming to the central office. The next thing, everything that we do here has to align and should align to this strategic plan. So priority four says empowering families, strengthening partnerships. This development, this project does exactly that. The goal is to transform the community engagement by cultivating and expanding opportunities for communication, collaboration, connection among families, students, and school, and partners. The strategic action establishes a family and community resource center to provide assistance and resources regarding education, health, and employment opportunities. That strategic action is the building. What's hosted in the building exemplifies priority four. Now, moving back to the design.
So everyone, when we mentioned that the Family Engagement and Resource Center was connected to the Building 21, oh, sorry, I shouldn't say building, I'm sorry, Bridgeview Academy, we also wanted to ensure that the new incoming families had a way to get to the, to this resource center without approaching Bridgeview Academy. And for that, we have created a separate entrance. Even though the building is connected to Bridgeview Academy, it has its own entrance and its own identity. And that's how we envisioned and started approaching this design. As far as the site, just a site goes, I will have Bob Carr talk more about it.
Good evening. Just very briefly, as Sarupa has spoken about the, the parking lot that's dedicated for visitors, and that gives people a, a drop-off point there to get into the building. And the majority of the site-related design and expense is getting through the approvals process with the city and the County Conservation District to manage the stormwater runoff created by the additional impervious cover. There'll be a basin on the west side of Bridgeview. There'll be a basin down at the southern end of the site, all to manage the runoff. Thank you.
So we'll continue this kind of, we'll continue this cadence for a little bit. We'll show you a plan, and then we'll show you some three-dimensional images. So we saw, we saw the site plan. So we saw, we saw the site plan, which Sarupa and Bob spoke about. This is the physicality of the building mass as it appears from Union Street. So the idea here is that you're seeing the main entrance to the facility. The main walkway that you see there and the double doors there are the primary entrance, and we'll see more about that in plan. Just peeking off to the left of the image is the upper portion of Bridgeview Academy. And there's also an entrance to the healthcare suite, if that's needed to be used off-hours from the rest of the resource center. This is a side image from Lehigh Street. So put this in here so that you can also see the relationship to Bridgeview Academy. This slope is a significantly sloping site from Union Street down. And so where the upper level of the resource center is shrouded in that metal panel towards the top that slopes and comes down the side of the building, below it, you're seeing the lower level of the building, and that lower level is what aligns with the upper level of Bridgeview Academy. So that's just an example of that massing from the side. The materials on the building are a mix of masonry materials and metal and glass.
A little more on the site. You do have this whole, I mean, everyone has seen Bridgeview Academy. It's a very high-sloping site. So the challenge or the design approach also was that even though, when you're coming from Lehigh Street, which is the prime entry into the town, you're going to see the building hidden behind it, and we wanted to make sure that's not the case, that new incoming families see the building as they approach the Bridgeview Academy. So that was the reason you have these peaks coming out, so that somebody sees that, oh, there is a building beyond. Coming back to this plan, I know Dr. Whartonby had mentioned that, you know, we had different functions given within this building or this tight, you know, footprint. What you see here is the upper-level plan for the project. You have two entrances. The one, the green spaces that you are, you see identified are the lobby spaces. On the left side, you have entering the administration building, which is your registration area and the other meeting spaces that are on the lower, connecting to the lower floor. You do have a security window there where you will check in and then get into the reception area. As you move along, and you would see this in the animation, how the building functions, but I'm just going to give you a brief overview. As you move along, you'll be directed to go into the registration area, where you still have another waiting area and a guidance person who would then direct you to appropriate desk or kiosks. On the right side, you would see the healthcare center, which has different exam rooms, a waiting area, a front desk, and doctors' offices. Mind you, each of these spaces that we designed, we had multiple meetings with all the involved entities, ensuring that every space was designed inside-out and was fitting and functioning the way it should be. If you go to the next. These are some of the images, what you see highlighted in red. And I know I talked to you about the earlier green space. That's what it is here. This is where you enter in after the security and the lobby area. I'm just going to quickly go through the glimpse. As you get, go into the registration area, you have this front desks that you would check into and then wait for being directed to different spaces. Your administration, registration area with different desks, small rooms on the side that have the testing center. And on the other side, the healthcare clinics lobby area and the check-in counter. As you go to the lower floor, you have, again, the lobby area, and on the left side, you have the meeting space. The meeting space was designed as a multipurpose room, which can host different activities, whether it was training, classrooms, collaboration for teachers to come and meet, different space, different functions, same space. We have a dividing partition that can allow you to have a small group or a larger group or an entire space, and that's how it was designed. So you have that multifunctional capability. The meeting room also faces a patio, so you have some sort of spill-out space in case you have to have some outdoor evening setting or during the day for any conversations. On the other side, you have the Workforce Development Center on the top, and then on the lower side is the staff lounge. You want to go through this quick?
So here we see the stairs, which connects both levels, and there's just some built-in millwork there to allow for removable station in the case of having an event in those meeting spaces to allow people to be directed towards that location. This is the workforce development space. It's sort of set up as a small classroom for those smaller lessons, and then as well as some workstations on that back wall there facing the patio on the right side of the building. And this is the staff lounge for all the employees that will be working here. So they have their own space for different seating. Also, they can access that patio out there as well with their own kitchenette on inside. Lastly, here we see this meeting space, what it would look like once you're in there. This is one of the presentation walls at the end, just to give you an idea of the space and the sort of presentations and meetings that can be held here and just the sort of overall feel of the space.
Project schedule-wise, we have been going through the state approvals and local approvals. That would go up to the beginning of the year. As Dr. Whartonby said, we are in the bid period right now. We should be receiving bids early November. And following that, and with the approval of the board, you will have the construction contract award, and then the construction continues for the next year with a target date of substantial completion in December of twenty-six, or beginning of December of twenty-six. And here's some of the projected costs. Again, these are estimates. They are developed as, you know, the program developed and based on the market fluctuation that we are seeing more so than earlier. And like Dr. Whartonby says, roughly at this point, at the, at around twelve million dollars. And now you have the animation.
So this is bringing it all together, all that information we threw at you. So you're seeing a spin around from Lehigh Street back over to Union Street. The animation will take us down through the main entrance of the building and into the lobby. As we pass, you'll see that healthcare entrance on the left, if it's needed for off-hours. Security on the left, main entrance and registration on the left. You're seeing the stairs ahead of you to go downstairs and the elevator there. And we're spinning towards the registration and enrollment area. The door is open for us, and we see that forecourt, registration there, and some kiosks that are available for that type of use. If someone needs a deeper connection, might be doing testing, seeing someone specifically, there's that open workspace for them to see and interact with staff members in that space. You're seeing some wall coverings and other finish elements as we walk through the space. And we're swinging back around, making our way back to the main lobby. So you got a, you have a better view of the registration desk there, and we're entering the healthcare suite, so you can see what that opening area is like. We're downstairs now. We just passed the classroom lab, computer lab, that was off of the main lobby on the lower level. We're moving through the meeting space. You're seeing this in the open configuration for the maximum seating capacity that's available there. As was mentioned, there is a divisible wall, so that if you would like to have two meetings simultaneously, the presentation walls on either end can be split for that purpose. And then we're coming back around. Public restrooms are not going to stop in, but they were on the left there. This is the staff break room that Evan was speaking about, that's off of the patio on that side of the building. And then we'll make a final stop at that workforce development space for any classroom activities that would happen there. So that's a quick overview and summary of the building, how it's configured.
I just want to say, I kept on saying that we had a lot of support, and I do want to thank a lot of people here. We had the design team and also Dr. Burks. Thank you so much for believing in us and, you know, ensuring that we get all the information to put such a complex program in such a, you know, great space. Dr. Whartonby, Dr. Burbom, Mr. Fick, Mrs. Lisa, great sir, Mrs. Abgard, Ms. Storres, Dr. McCullough, and Mrs. Monley, who was here in the good portion of the designing phase. A big thank you to all of you because the amount of information that you kept feeding us has brought us to this stage at this point. Any questions are welcome at this point.
I only have one question, and then I have a comment. The area where the staff, the staff's kitchen area, is there a door so they can go outside and enjoy themselves? I just wanted to make sure that the door was there.
There is a door.
Okay. And then the other part, the comment that I want to make, I think this is wonderful.
Thank you.
Everything you guys have heard me talk about lighting, you've heard me talking. Everything is wonderful, and thank you. And I'm excited about the fact that you guys worked together on this. You know, and I remember another time, I don't know if Ms. Phoebe left us, but they were saying that it couldn't happen that way. But you see what happened when we get together?
Yeah.
So I'm excited.
I also have a comment, just also back, Lisa, here. I'm like, this is beautiful. I've been thinking about this building since we mentioned it, and we, you know, we're in the discussion phase of this is what we want to do, and just hearing the community say, we need one central location for all of our resources that's accessible to us and, and more. So I feel like, you know, I also, going through the video, I was like, AI is crazy. I thought those were real people. And I was just like, I feel like I'm just like, for real, walking through. So I think that this was amazing. And again, thank you guys for all of your hard work with this. I pass by Bridgeview Academy every day, going to work and leaving work. So that area needed just a highlight. You know, it's such a big space, and you see kids there all the time playing, playing football and sports. So I think this is just like, perfect. This was a perfect spot, perfect location for it. And yeah, I think this was just amazing. Thank you again.
Yeah, I think, and the reason I wanted to mention all the people that were involved in that from Allentown School District was they made sure that all the entities that were going to be part of this program were brought to the table. We had these long discussions. We had a follow-up meeting with every single entity, whether it was Valley Health or for the healthcare suite, whether it was, you know, the workforce development people and also the administration people. Like, we kept on asking, okay, we want to meet these people, and they didn't question us. They just brought them to the table, ensured that everything that we needed to design the way it needs to be designed, functionally correct. A big thank you.
Dr. Burks, do you like to say something?
Yes. I want to thank DI Group, as well as all members of our team and the committee that's working to move this project forward. I want to, it would be remiss if I don't thank our, some of our elected officials that helped us to get some of the resources to start this project. And like I said, it would be remiss if I did not name Senator Miller and Representative Schausberg, as well as Representative Swire, Representative Segal, for helping us to get, secure some of the grant dollars. And we will continue to fundraise so that we can support this effort. I want to say for the board, just for the record, we have not identified a health partner for this officially. So I want to make sure that we, because we will bring it before you for your approval. So I want to make sure that I said that, mentioned that. And we're really excited about this being a three-phase project. So this aspect of the Family Community Resource Center, the timeline is because of the grant that we received. So we have to conclude the project by next year. And the second phase of the project is to build on the Bridgeview campus to expand, expand the grade configurations on that campus. So we're going to be working really diligently with the state to get the approvals, as well as build out the curricula and the overall school design concept. And the third aspect of this project is to create a multipurpose center on that location. So it's the three-phased approach. So I want to thank you again, DI Group, and all our team members and our friends at Lehigh Valley Health, as well as the workforce development, and everyone who's really working hard for this. And I'm really excited about this, having a true hub for our community to come. And a part of the grant that we received, we had to supply or offer mental health services as well as health services, and so that's why the overall design of this facility. So thank you. Thank you so much. And Mr. Isette, Barry Isette, that firm. I always want to make it a person, but I know it's a firm.
So thank you very much for the time to present everything tonight. This project, the athletic projects, everything else. So thank you very much, really appreciate it. And I think the, having the building committee reinstated and having it was actually well worth the time and trouble. Thank you for your help, too.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion to move this agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
It's not, it's not an action item, right?
No.
Discussion, sorry.
Discussion, sorry.
It's tired.
Is there anything that's an action item that's moving along?
All right. Is there any comments on non-agenda items? All right. Is there any old business to come before the board?
No.
Any new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. We're going to dive right into it, because it's been a long night. Sorry. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, October 23, 2025. The Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our Board's policy, any person may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented in resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Board Secretary, Mr. Simonson. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We will now have the roll call. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Conover.
Present.
Ms. Harris. Ms. Harris. Ms. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Here.
Ms. Noel.
Here.
Ms. Hartnett.
Here.
Ms. Sierra.
Here.
Ms. Tavercio.
Here.
We have seven Board members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for my Board President remarks, I'm going to keep it brief. I did have a speech written, but Dr. Burks tapped on everything that needed to be addressed. I just wanted to stay, say on behalf of the Board that the state budget is not a game. It's not a game. It's a fundamental promise of equality education. Its absence is not merely an accounting issue. It's a crisis of conscience with a direct human cost right here in Allentown. So first, I want to commend the administration for all the hard work, all the pivoting that's happening. I know you guys are taking a lot of time and energy to make adjustments right now as we're navigating this unprecedented time that we're in right now. I'm praying and hoping that there is a, that the budget and hoping that there is a, that the budget does get passed. But for right now, we will not compromise on educating our children. We will not. We will continue to press forward. We will do whatever it takes. But of course, that gets to, we're stretching ourselves to the limit. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank everyone, the administration, everyone, because we think it doesn't affect them, but it does. When you wake up every day and you see that a budget isn't passed, you're wondering if you're still going to have your job every day. You're showing up with anxiety and fear. That is not a good working environment to be in. So I'm really encouraging everyone, families, everyone, please contact your state legislator, contact Senate, Congress, contact whoever you need to contact to make sure that you are putting pressure on them. And I want to thank our state legislators. I want to thank our senator. They have been tremendous during this time. Every time I call and I reach out, they're advocating, they're doing their best in what they can do. And for the ones that are a part of this, that are not moving the needle forward, you should be ashamed. I'm sorry, I'm in this chair to advocate for our children. And it's sad and shameful that we're about to approach the month of November and there is not a budget. So I'm advocating right now that we keep putting pressure so that we can get this passed. So that's my comments for tonight. Dr. Burks?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any remarks. I think I said enough in the other meetings. But thank you.
At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note the remarks are limited to three minutes and the microphone will be disabled at the end of three minutes. Please also be informed, the School Board of Directors appreciates public comment. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concern.
Robert E. Smith Jr.
Robert E. Smith Jr. I live on the east side of Allentown, 1060 East Gordon Street. Had a lot of comments tonight. I'll wait till the end to address some of them. But some housekeeping. The pool is not even in the same building as the main building for William Allen. William Allen was built in 1916 and is historical. It cannot be torn down. I repeat, it cannot be torn down. The gym was built in 1974. Deer off is older than J. Millie Seawoods. So these comments about tearing down William Allen cannot happen. The Alumni Association and most of Allentown would be against that. Now, another agenda item, I think we disagree on the sit log. All I think was, we should have did more vetting. The board can say no or table things once in a while, and I think it should have been vetted better. That was all my problem with sit log. Thought I was professional with that. I told you my concerns. You ignored them, fine. Two administrators left after a month, 37 days into the district. There's some great things happening, but there's also some retainage problems. People are leaving. Different, both high schools have issues. People want to get out, retire. Two English teachers in William Allen, I'm not going to mention names, you know who they are. There is issues that we have to deal with, leadership issues. And you have to go into the schools and talk to these people. And the people that you criticize on Facebook are mothers, are employees of this district. So remember that when you're attacking them. They can't come here to vent because they're feared of retribution. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And now for information updates. Is there any update from the Allentown Recreation Commission?
There are no updates at this time.
Is there any updates from the Allentown Public Library?
At the moment, we're actually working with, having a meeting with the city and Church of Conference for the issue that we're having as far as like with tent camps and how we're working together. Due to that, when daybreak is closed, they'll be going to the library and it's not safe for the actual other clients that go in with their children.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any updates from LCTI?
Not too many.
There is an update from the CLIU. The local task force unites parents, districts, and IU ARC and community partners to uphold the 1972 Right to Education Consent Agreement, ensuring equitable access to education for students with disabilities. Guided by the statewide revitalization effort from Dr. Carol Clancy, our region LTF led by Amanda Robbins and Jessica McCossey, I'm sorry, continues to thrive as a model of collaboration. This year, members joined a statewide capacity building institution in Gettysburg to strengthen communication and share understanding among stakeholders. The LTF 21 Action Plan focused on increasing awareness and participation with outreach efforts such as presentations and easily accessible meeting information on the CLIU website, supporting ongoing family and district engagement. I also wanted to share that this past Monday, the CLIU hired three new behavioral therapists. And the thought process behind that, for a couple of years, they've been using a lot of contracted services and it's been inconsistent. And now that we're able to hire three new behavioral therapists and have them onboard permanently, it'll provide some consistency with care for our students. And there is a new Director of Special Programs and Services. We are pleased to announce that Dr. Kathy Nelson has been appointed as the new Director of Special Programs and Services. Dr. Nelson is already known from her exceptional work as Assistant Director, where she demonstrated deep expertise, dedication, and strong commitment to students and families. That ends my report for tonight. I think that ends all the reports for tonight. Okay. May I have a motion of approval for the Board of Directors' report?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the policy agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the Secretary and Treasurer's report?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval of the Superintendent's report?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the Personnel Report?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
No.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval of the Building Report?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. May I have a motion of approval for the Finance Report?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Mr. Bercio.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Nicoloff.
Yes.
Ms. Noel.
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. At this time, we are only taking public comments on non-agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note remarks are limited to three minutes and the microphone will be disabled at the end of three minutes. Please be informed that the School Board of Directors appreciates public comments. However, we are not able to respond to these comments. Administration will address your concerns and update the board on the status of your concern. Mr. Secretary?
Robert E. Smith Jr.
Robert E. Smith Jr. On the east side of Allentown, 1060 East Gordon Street. There was one other speaker here tonight from the public, Victor Mazzati. He happened to be a former county commissioner and you cut him off. That was really rude. In a typical contract, Madam President, the solicitor may be misguided, or I really have a lot of respect for him and he's a great negotiator, but I think he was wrong tonight and I'm going to tell you why. $300 fine generated by a bus patrol citation. $250 goes to the school entity where the violation occurred. $25 to the primary police department. That's the part where the city gets. And $25 to the school bus safety grant program account. So let's do some math. If violations are month to month, or come close to September, we're talking over $3 million this year in total revenue if every citation was paid. So let's find out where this money's going. Because the school district obviously could use that money. So where is the money going? If it's not going to the school district and only 25 go to the city and 25 go to the grant program, where's the other 250 per citation? Where is the money? Who's got the money? And the maintenance people still don't have a contract. Now, July 1st was the end of the contract. Where are the negotiations? Here's the lowest paying members of the Allentown School District. They didn't get a raise. Everybody else got a raise. The administrators certainly got their raises, but the maintenance people did not get a raise. But the medical benefits went up. So you see what happened to the poor maintenance people who clean every school and take care of every building? Their pay decreased because the medical benefits went up and they didn't get a raise. And they're not, and you guys aren't negotiating with them. Shame on you on this. Give them a contract. They're the lowest paying people in the district and they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Is there any old business to come before the board?
I do have some old business. I just want to say to this board, again, like I said, this is talking to Mike. I want to say to the board, the board that I'm sitting on right now, you know, the board changes every, what, two years? I can't stress enough that we have to stay focused. Because I wish there would have been more people who ran. Because what happens is you can't get caught up in the politics. I can say that much. You cannot get caught up in the politics. You cannot allow board members or people in general to grandstand and to talk about, we have to continue to be effective and we have to be successful because it's about our kids. So that's old. The reason why I put in old business? Because that's the old business that had us in the deficit that we were in and in those spaces and places that we should not have been in. So please, I have one more month. What is it, November and December? Then I'll get on that other side. Stay focused. It's about our kids. It's not about people digging for stuff so that they can try to show us up. We are doing the darn thing. Embrace it. Embrace it. I did eight years. We got board members that's possibly coming on here who did 16 and we were in a deficit massively. So understand your worth, stay focused on what you're doing, and please don't entertain some of the stuff that we may entertain. And I tried to say it the best way I could. So that's it. That's old. That's old business. Put that down. Old business.
No, thank you for that, Ms. Conover. And we will, we are, and we will. Like, and I appreciate, you know what, I'm going to save it for next month. I'm going to save it for next month. Motion to adjourn this meeting. Oh, is there any new business? Nothing. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All right, have a good one. Just make sure you show up next meeting.